The city commission meeting to order for our September fifteenth. First thing on the agenda is invocation by Pastor Terry Engler of the Family Worship Center. So Terry, if you come forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and we thank you, Lord, for the city commission, Lord, and the business that they are about to transact. And, Lord, we ask for your wisdom. We ask for your guidance. And, Lord, we ask especially for your blessing upon them for the service that they provide to this community. Lord, may they seek your agenda and not theirs only. And, Lord, we'll thank you for that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And God bless Uncle Bill, Kathleen Crey, and, I'm sorry, Bill Mills, Kathleen Crey, and Uncle Wayne. Okay, next on the agenda is Pledge of Legion, and it's our honor to have Ms. Lee's third grade class at Skelly's going to come forward and help us with that. So if you please come forward. Come up here. Back up this way. Back up. Come back.
Get all the way up.
There you go. Line up along there. There you go. Perfect. Good job. Okay, you want to start?
I'm Sophia Carter. The best thing about El Dorado is ice cream and the pool.
Amen.
My name is Erin. Erin Michael.
What's your favorite thing about El Dorado?
The pool and ice cream.
We got a second here. Go ahead.
My name's Riley Baker, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is everything.
My name is Jessie Weary. My favorite thing about El Dorado is the carnival.
There you go. Good job.
My name is Josie Castor, and the favorite, the most favorite thing that I like is the water park.
My name's Mackenzie Powers. My favorite things about El Dorado is ice cream.
My name is Gabrielle Reese, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is nice people and good, and good friends.
My name is Tori Smith, and the, the thing I like about El Dorado is the lake.
My name is Taylor Sutton, and my favorite thing about El Dorado is the downtown flowers, I guess.
There you go. Okay, now if you'll all turn this way towards flag.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to a public which stands one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, guys. I think as one of the best groups we've ever had, Mayor.
They have really good ice cream.
The best ice cream around.
Everybody head very clean now. Okay, next on the agenda, we don't have any proclamations, so we're passed on that. Do we have any personal appearances? Anybody like come forward, take name and address on any issues?
I would just like to voice my opinion on this farmer's market thing. I've talked to a lot of people. I'm getting a negative vibe on this thing. The city, in my opinion, and a lot of other people's opinion, don't need to be financially involved in this thing. I don't know what you guys are hearing, but if you get out on the street, I think you'll find that most people don't want the city to get involved like we did at the country club. And I don't think that turned out the way, exactly the way you wanted it. That's about all I've got to say, other than the fact that, Mike, I appreciate you asking questions. I appreciate you making phone calls. You doing research. This is what keeps government open and honest. And I applaud you for what you do, and I think a lot of people do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, is there anyone, anybody else like come forward?
My name is Patricia Howard. I live at forty thirty-four Southwest Tenth, El Dorado. And my comment is on the vote that we're going to have hopefully soon on the pit bull or the dog ordinance. I have a friend who has a emotional support dog who is not allowed to have her in town because...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, excuse me. This is actually on the agenda.
Yeah.
And so any, any comments regarding agenda items we typically would wait.
We can wait, yeah.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay, 'cause... Thank you for waiting.
Bob Hendricks, Commander of the American Legion. I just wanted to come down and, and give you guys kind of a briefing of what took place this last weekend with the American Veterans Traveling Tribute. We had a total of nine schools come in to go on tours of the wall itself and the tribute as well as the museum, and we had about eighteen hundred students out of those nine schools. We also, and this is just an estimate because there were so many entry points into the site, we had between seven and eight thousand people that came in and visited. And I want to thank those of you that are on the commission that did come out. Some of you I did see. I tried to get, meet everybody that came in, but I just couldn't pull that off. But again, I want to thank you for allowing us the, the special permit to use the old driving range, and just wanted you to have an update of what took place.
Well, I think you, I think you guys did a spectacular job. We swung by, and I was kind of excited to see a lot of younger people there, because I remember it being in town when I was a kid, and that was the first time I'd seen it since then. And it was, it was really nice, so...
I'd like to thank Post eighty-one, all the volunteers. That took a lot of manpower to put that on, and that was a very positive thing for our community, Bob, so...
Thank you.
I want you to pass it on to each one of them, a sincere thank you from the city, okay?
And just kind of a side note, one of those groups of students that came in, we had sent out letters to the school districts for eighth and eleventh graders, and one of the fifth grade classes here in El Dorado, a teacher got a field trip approved, and she brought a fifth grade class in, and we actually got as good a questions from those young boys and girls as we did from the high school age kids.
These kids are smart, aren't they?
And the unfortunate thing is, is, is our school system is not teaching this part of our history. That's the worst part of it.
The museum was awesome, too.
He, he did a good job, and that wasn't all of his, all of his display. He just brought in what he had room for.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again, Bob. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else like come forward? Mr. Mayor, commission? I've got a little statement I'd like to read. I've got copies for you if you want to read along. Shane, can you give us your name and address?
Thanks, sir.
It's okay if I have a copy, too. Didn't I give you one? Nope. Thank you.
Shane Kraus, eight thirty West Fourth Avenue. I'm a former city commissioner, and I served on the Sports Authority, also known as the Educational Facilities Authority of Butler County. I'm here tonight to discuss the city's lease with the American Legion, and hopefully to right a great wrong, which I have some responsibility for. This lease was a tremendous help towards the stadium project's completion. This lease was a win-win contract for both the Sports Authority and the Legion. It was intended to accomplish many things. It secured the preferred site for the project, as well as solved many problems that the Legion was having at the time. It was intended for the city to lease only the stadium site for one hundred years, which would provide a steady source of income to the Legion for one hundred years. The remainder of the land was to be developed. At some point, the lease and the leased land was to be transferred to the Sports Authority per provisions in paragraph five of the lease. Because golf operations were to be carried on for a certain time, the entire property was included in the original lease. There was also a provision for the purchase of the stadium site land, which was solely at the discretion of the city and the Sports Authority. The city and the Sports Authority never intended to buy the land up front. This vision was also held by the previous executive board of the Legion. The current executive board was not in charge at the time, and when they took over, things changed. The purchase of the forty-five acres was forced by pressure and threats from the new American Legion Executive Board. This was a breach of the terms of the lease. The Sports Authority did not want to allow negative statements, false accusations, and even opposition demonstrations to delay or put a black mark on the project. So the land was purchased, at which time the lease should have been dissolved as a condition of the sale, or at least renegotiated. There was no provision in the lease for this to happen. This was a mistake on my part to approve the lease without this protection for the citizens of El Dorado. After this point in time, all of the costs incurred due to the lease and on behalf of the Legion should have never happened. The citizens paid for them. The results of these events have been fantastic for the city and for the Legion. The city, schools, and college have a beautiful new facility. The Legion has sold two parcels of their property for over half a million dollars. The Legion was able to have their, the city operate their golf course for a short time, and then had the city shut it down, decommission it, and clean it up. The city performed and paid for all of the environmental testing and cleanup, which normally the landowner would have to do to develop and sell property. The city performed and paid for all the wetlands cleanup and redirecting to alleviate flooding and erosion on neighboring properties, and to conform with state and federal regulations, which are normally paid for by the landowner. The city has mowed and maintained the property for five years. The city has given the Legion free water and sewer services, and paid for all electric and gas utilities for the Legion building and property up to one thousand dollars per month for five years. The city has paid the property taxes and paid rent to the Legion of one thousand dollars per month until the sale of the land, and five hundred dollars per month since. These costs have all been paid by the citizens of El Dorado. It was the intention of the city commission and the Sports Authority to pay to the Legion the lease rent and utilities for one hundred years for the use of their leased land for the stadium. We never intended to saddle the citizens of El Dorado with these costs for one hundred years if the stadium land was bought and paid for. The lease payments and utility costs could have been as much as two million dollars over the one hundred years, and then the Legion would still own the land and continue to lease it, or sell the land for one dollar and other valuable considerations. Now, this means that after one hundred years, the parties would sit down and negotiate a proper value and sale price of the land and the improvements. The terms of the lease stipulated a price per acre for the purchase of the stadium site if purchased. The forced purchase of the land took one quarter of a million dollars out of the building fund, over one quarter of a million dollars out of the building fund for the stadium. So many design changes had to be made, and some things we wanted, we didn't get. The only provision in the lease for dissolution of the lease refers to a situation where the leasing neglects to make the monthly payments. Then the Legion should, could terminate the lease. I feel that the city and the Legion should negotiate a termination of the lease and not make the citizens of El Dorado pay for the costs of continuing the lease for ninety-five more years. This commission needs to realize and correct my mistakes of the past. I'm sure that the members of the Legion who fought for the freedoms of our citizens would not want to continue taking these unjustified payments and services from those citizens, especially since they have sold two parcels of their land and have realized a financial windfall of over half a million dollars. This needs to be resolved, or every future commission will have to deal with this issue. As for the issue of the Legion parking lot overlay that the Legion now wants the citizens of El Dorado to pay sixty thousand dollars for, paragraph four of the lease clearly states that the city's responsibility for operations and maintenance pertains only to golf. Therefore, once the golf operations were discontinued, the city's responsibility for maintenance was terminated. The city has continued to mow and care for this property for over four years, even though it has not been their responsibility, and the citizens continue to pay. Paragraph nine of the lease says that the parties agree to work together and discuss lease contract provisions and modifications. This did not happen when the purchase of the land was forced.
Former Commissioner Kraus, you're actually out of time, but you could request additional time if you'd like.
This was brought in under personal appearance, so we're not even on agenda item number one for public comment yet.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'm about done, anyway. This did not happen when the purchase of the land was forced. This did not happen when the parking lot was rebuilt and surfaced. This did not happen many times over the past five years over many issues. This should happen soon to achieve a solution that is good for the citizens of El Dorado as well as the Legion membership. I would be very interested to see the numbers of the costs that the city has incurred at the Legion property and because of the lease. If three of the commissioners agree, perhaps you could direct staff to gather this information. I'd be happy to answer any questions now, or in a work session, or in a meeting with the Legion to renegotiate the lease if you like. No questions?
A lot of stuff there, Shane. You did your homework.
I lived it for five years, six years.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Okay, 'cause I made a mistake. I should have this, we should have had this under this as personal appearance, so come on up.
Mr. Mayor, I think that the majority of this could probably be covered under the first agenda item.
That's what I'm thinking.
The Legion meeting discussion, so if you'd like to...
Right. So this is agenda item number one, public comments.
Yes.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes, and, and the parking lot discussion is on first.
Yeah. Go ahead, Bob.
Well, I've, I've been up once. I didn't know if I could make a...
You sure you can?
Absolutely, you can. The forty-five acres that he's talking about, the Sports Authority was...
Mr. Hendricks, can you...
The forty-five acres that he's talking about, the Sports Authority was forced to purchase, actually ended up being thirty-eight acres, because part of that sales agreement between the post and the educational authority was to return acreage that they did not need, and that was purchased. The sale of the property that the, what was supposedly student housing put on, that was, a letter was sent to the city, to the city manager, and approval was provided to go ahead and sell that. So that's two areas that are incorrect in the statement.
We are still under agenda item number one. Do any other public comments you may like come forward? Okay, we'll close public comments, and we're ready for agenda item number two, which is consider approval of city commission minutes, meeting amendments for September second, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're ready for agenda item number three, which is the Legion parking lot. So Scott, or is anybody want to take off on this one?
I could, I, I, it was discussed at the last meeting to, to bring this issue up. Attached to this agenda item are the minutes from past meetings. I think it's really being brought to you as a discussion item amongst yourselves.
I know when I read this over like six months ago, the part about the golf course, you know, and talking about the parking lot, you know, kind of, after I reread that, kind of catches mine. The other thing is, they talked about item number nine about, you know, trying to work together. I think they made a mistake by not coming to us, you know, and saying we need this fixed, and I think that we owe something, because it needed to be fixed, or they wouldn't have fixed it. So I, I'm thinking, my thought was at the time, and I haven't had anything that's changed my mind yet, that something ought to be negotiated with them, as to what it would have done if we'd have went out, and we was going to look at that, and you gave us a number one time, Scott. Do you remember what that number was?
It was, yeah, it was an unbudgeted thing, and I looked at it, and after talking to the contractor that completed the work for the Legion, I discussed it with them on the method they utilized, and felt that the city would have gone at it a different way had we had the funds, and if we thought it needed to be at the top of our list to, to have something done to it. And that number was sixteen thousand.
Okay. My thought was to sit down in good faith with them, and that was kind of the number that was on my mind, and trying to justify what we was doing there. So I just think that, you know, under item number nine, that we have some responsibility there, and I think it's all about compromising.
I guess I can say real quick. I appreciate this, Shane. This is interesting and new history to me to learn about. Originally, I kind of agreed with you, Mike, maybe not to the extent with the amount, but that maybe we should take it as hopefully an honest mistake and something that won't happen again, that we should have had that dialogue. And I don't want to leave anyone hanging if it was an honest mistake, but I don't know how much of that we should be willing to come to the table with. I guess I was unsure on the number, but my initial feelings were that we could probably figure out something to kind of help out. But I will say, it's interesting to learn a little bit of the history that I was unaware of with everything that just kind of came to us. I don't know. What are your guys' thoughts?
The other thing I want to throw into that, Chase, as we agree with the number, I thought we should go in and amend the contract somehow, the lease contract, and spell that out exactly who's responsible for what, and have that as part of the negotiation, along with money, too. Now, that was, there was two things that was on my mind six months ago when this came out.
What I would, I would be interested, for the sake of clarification, I don't know if this goes with this specific topic, but to find out a little bit more information in regards to what Commissioner Kraus, you know, just showed us. Again, I'm constantly learning history from the past, and this is something, just kind of stuff I wasn't, to be honest, aware of. And so I would be interested just to get a little bit more clarification. I don't know if right now's the time, but I would be... Do you guys have any, what are you guys leaning towards?
Well, I'm, I just read this, and I've read it in the past, but, and it's only two sentences, so I'll go ahead and read it. This, paragraph four in the lease states, "All golf course operation and maintenance costs will be paid by the city of El Dorado, including driving and parking surfaces effective November first, 2009. Any and all prior expenses shall be LeSour's responsibility." As Mr. Kraus pointed out, there is no, no longer golf operation or maintenance. The traffic out there now is sold for the bingo hall and the cantina, I believe. I mean, if we're going to go with what the lease says, I don't see where the city has an obligation. Now, if we want to amend it, the lease in the future, and agree to maintain this parking lot that's there now, I would entertain that, but, and we, at our last meeting, we did promise Commander Hendricks an answer tonight, so I think if we have further discussion, it ought to be about things in the future and not this particular item.
Dave? I think as most all citizens of this town realize that it seems that anytime the city does anything, not intentionally, but it seems to always come back and bite us a little bit, whether we're building a YMCA, building streets, buying golf courses, putting in spray parks, putting in additions, we tend to find out the hindsight of what could have and should have been done. And I'm not a lawyer. We have a lawyer. We had lawyers look at this. We were told many times how it might go down, how it is going down, and, and this. So as far as what Shane was bringing up, is pretty much the way I remember segments of it. You know, we negotiated just as, as, as the Legion had one set of people in charge. It was negotiated with those people. We had a complete, a few different people on this commission. And, and next year, there'll be a new set of commissioners, and four years later, there'll be a new set of commissioners. So as I think we found out, or I found out for sure, that unfortunately, we, we find that hindsight is 20/20, and we cannot see the future clearly. What should be done? I suppose I ought to listen to legal counsel. Don't know that we need to make a decision tonight on the whole contract with the Legion. But I think we need to go about it, come to an end, come to an end that everybody's happy, including the citizens that are disgruntled, the Legion people that are disgruntled, and commissioners that may not be as happy as they want to be on it. So the answer I don't think we're going to come up with tonight on, on this deep a situation. As far as the parking lot, I think the Legion made some mistakes there by going and doing it without contacting us. I guess, I don't know in this, in this piece of paper that it says that we have to do it. I don't know that this piece of paper says that we don't have to do it. So it's got a lot of legalese that can be determined six different ways by six different But we're supposed to figure it out. So that's my answer. Not a very good one, but...
You know, one of the challenges I think that we run into, and you brought it up, Shane mentioned it in his thing, and Bob's talked about it before. Administration's changed. There's new leadership at the Legion. There's new leadership here, and that's going to continue...
continue changing with elections and within both entities. I think the challenge is, you know, we, and we talked about this a few months ago when this came up originally, about adding more lines to this lease, but, but unless the history's there, or there's somebody that's, that maintains positions on either side, they're going to be rereading the lease or not reading it. And I guess my only concern with, with picking up the tab on this is, are we back in this same boat ten years from now or fifteen years from now when somebody doesn't read the lease right, or somebody doesn't interpret it right, and they go and spend more money and then expect, and then expect us to, to pay for it then as well? And how, how often do we keep doing that is, is my big question.
One thing I'd like to do is read item number nine again, and it's in the spirit of the lease, is kind of where I'm coming from too. Parties always agree to work together and discuss lease contract provisions and possible modifications that are constructive modifications subject to both parties, approval and agree to make good faith efforts to make accommodations whenever possible. And even on the addendum that was done in eleven one ninety-nine, it says, "The parties further reemphasize paragraph nine," and it spells it out there again. So, I think this kind of falls into that area that a sixteen thousand dollar deal on a sixty thousand dollar project is trying to show some good faith to those guys as we go forward to maybe look at things in the future. So, that's where I'm coming from. I, I think sixteen versus sixty is trying to show some good faith.
Well, back to the lease. The intent of this lease is to facilitate the leasees' desire to maintain and operate the Leesor's golf operations and provide property for the development of a football and track and field complex for the benefit of the community. I mean, that's, that's the intent of the lease.
Yeah, you kept forward, Shane, going to. As I remember the intent of the lease, since you've brought it up that way, the Executive Board of the Legion, I think, had the same vision that the people in the Citizens Stadium Committee had before there was actually a Sports Authority started. And that was, the Legion side is the preferred spot, you know, there was kind of a poll done on that, and that was a preferred spot to give us a, a good, better looking gate, western gate to the city, a great spot for it, close to the college, good access, utilities and everything there. And I think the Legion Executive Board, now I'm not, can't speak for them, but I'm going by what I perceive and remember. I think they wanted to be a part, partner and a part of our community in helping that project, and the intent of the lease was to lease that land. Lease it for a hundred years, give them a steady stream of up to fifteen hundred dollars a month, up to two thousand to start, until they sold one of their other properties, then up to fifteen hundred dollars a month for a hundred years. That'd be a steady stream of income, plus it would open their property for development, which it did, the city facilitated that for them. They would sell more properties. The city would more than likely end up with a parkway through the floodway that, you know, beautify that part of the area because you can't develop in that floodway and floodplain. And I think, and, and I think that the Executive Board realized to sell a chunk out of the middle of their golf course, they probably couldn't get the votes from their membership. And that's my perception. They needed a membership vote to sell property. But the lease worked out best for everybody. I think the membership, when, when the Executive Board changed, they didn't see it that way. There were all sorts of things said, lots of stuff thrown around, I don't want to go into any of that, but that forced the sale. And in my mind, once the, the land was purchased for the stadium, the lease should have been stopped then. And like I said, that's one of my mistakes for not pushing that issue. But there was a great desire on so many people to have this not really great project go through and be completed, that I didn't want to be the one that put the black marks on it. I didn't want to be the one that stood up and shouted, number one, because I wanted the project too, but also I didn't have the votes. I was one vote out of four on the commission, and I was one vote out of seven on the Sports Authority. So, rather than raise a big stink and make everything look bad knowing it's going to be a vote of one to six or something, and, and that show up in the paper and the reasons I voted that way, I decided not to. But I do think the lease needs to go away. We can't make these, the citizens can't make these payments. A possible suggestion, if the Legion's willing to negotiate, is that floodway land. Perhaps the city can purchase that area for a park from the, the Legion, giving them another sale, more income, and we can dump the lease somehow. I mean, it's up to you guys if you want to negotiate for that, but that's what I would do if I was in your place, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, what would you like to do? Tell them we don't want to do it, or do something?
Well, the way I read this, if we don't, if we take no action, then, then we don't give them anything. If, if someone wants to make, make a contribution to it or make a payment to it, it sounds like it's going to take some affirmative action. It's going to take somebody making a motion and a second and a vote, to me.
I didn't catch when I was reading this lease about paying the taxes, and we hadn't paid that fifteen thousand dollars. Is that in here that we have to pay the taxes to have?
We were researching that last week. We're trying to find if we have paid them in the past, but we did notice that in the lease, there is no requirement that we pay the land taxes. So, we're still researching that.
We've paid them in the past, though.
Some more on the history. When the Legion was asked to provide a confidential appraisal of our property, we did so, along with the individual up on, across the road from where the middle school's now located at. Within a matter of months of us providing that confidential appraisal to the city, our property taxes went up three hundred percent, thereby forcing us to do something. The city approached us for the lease. The approach was, they were going to lease the entire golf course with the provision in the lease that the stadium would be put in where it's at. Also part of that negotiation that Mr. Kraus was involved in, and he and I spoke about this several times, was that this complex was to be called the American Legion Veterans' Sports Complex. Now, when it came down to time for the naming, the decision had been made prior to that it was going to be called the BG Products Veterans' Sports Complex. So, that's where part of the rub is with the members of the Legion. We were, to be politically correct, misled by members on the Educational Authority and on the city about this project. Why would the lease have been written to reduce our payments of the lease money if when the property, the stadium was put in, the lease was going to stop? So, Mr. Kraus's argument about it should have stopped because that's the way the lease was written, why would that provision be in there to reduce the lease amount when the stadium project was completed? That's common sense. If you're, if you're planning on terminating the lease when the stadium project is completed, why put that provision in a lease unless, one, that's not your intent, or, two, you're continuing to try to deceive people?
Commander, I'm, I didn't, I didn't read it that way. What I, the way I read it was in the paragraph four, what, what ceased after golf operations were the maintenance costs. And if it's in here somewhere where it, I don't see anywhere where it says that if land is sold, it stopped, it says it's reduced proportionally by whatever percentage of the land was sold, but, I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen that in here.
In, in the paperwork that you have in front, and I, I'm, I don't have any paperwork, so I really, in the paperwork you have in front of you, does it give the legal description of what the city was leasing?
Yes, it does, I believe.
And if you, if your engineer will go pull the map up and bring it into you, those survey stakes is the entire American Legion golf course. And if you'll notice, the cutout on the drawing that you have is where the stadium project is, where the stadium stands today. In paragraph nine, where we try to, we confer in agreement, gentlemen, how many times have I been before you and made a statement that I have tried to get on a personal appearance, and every time I've tried that, including again today, I've never made it? I don't control personal appearances. Apparently, you guys don't control personal appearances. There's only one person that does, and I always am not put on there. And when I came in last week and asked to be on a personal appearance, I specifically told Mr. Llewellyn's secretary, administrative assistant, whatever he's called, that I wanted to come in for a personal appearance to thank the city for allowing us to have the event and explain what happened. And you can see that that didn't happen again.
Mr. Hendricks, I apologize. We have a new administrative assistant to the city manager. I've helped him with the agenda this week, and I think his understanding was that you were, this was going to be your agenda item. You were going to, everything you were going to do was going to be under this. And so, I, I, I understand that that's not what you meant, but I think that that was his understanding. So, that, I apologize. That was our mistake. We'll fix it in the future.
I, I, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm frustrated with trying to get in to talk to the city. I doubt that that will happen. I truly doubt it. I've tried to come in and talk to city commission for over six months, and it can't occur. I can't get a personal appearance. But two weeks ago, or a week ago, you have a personal appearance where somebody comes in and berates and threatens people. I'm, I don't see the correlation. Now, maybe that's just my perspective.
Has there, has there been a time when you've come into the commission room during commission meeting and not been able to talk to us?
Oh, no, huh? I've always had been able to come up for a public comment. But I, but, but I can't come up and rant and rave for forty-five minutes, not that I would do that to begin with.
Commander, how much did, did you actually get paid for that forty-five acres? It's six thousand acres, so two hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Is what you got paid for forty-five acres out there?
And then we paid, we paid back the difference down to thirty-eight acres.
Yeah, okay.
It's two hundred, I think it was two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and we bought back forty-five to thirty-eight was nine acres, eight acres. And, and the, and the thing is, if, if you look at the appraised value for the property at the time of the sale to the stadium, the appraised value was thirty-nine thousand dollars an acre.
How much did that add up to?
More than any other contributor so far with the project, and we have no recognition, period. None.
Well, if I, I guess, just to share my thoughts one more time, if I was basing my thoughts off of what I know up until this point, I think we definitely need to, and that's something we're not going to be able to figure out tonight as far as the lease. I think that needs to get figured out. I think we really need to dig into that and find some clarification. I'm still not opposed to giving them something, because in all my experience so far with the folks from the Legion, I felt like they've been honest and very pleasant and grateful, to my experience. And I, again, like to think that it was just an honest mistake. I do think that looking at it, we aren't necessarily obligated, but I would like to think it was just an honest mistake in terms of the parking lot. So, I wouldn't be opposed to giving them something. I'm not in favor of giving them the amount they want, but that's kind of where I stand as far as the parking lot issue. I do think the lease issue, we need to dig into some more, and we need to get figured out sooner than later, but I don't think we're going to be able to figure that out tonight.
Can I come up again?
Sure.
Just tell me if I'm taking a step back.
Sorry, Shane. Sitting here, thank you.
The property, or the, the buy down of the rent, where it drops from a thousand to five hundred, refers to if any property is sold. The first property sold was for the site, so therefore the rent went from a thousand to five hundred. But it was written for another site. It was not intended, if that property is sold, then the rent continues for a hundred The other thing is, you know, Mr. Hendricks brought up some things that aren't really pertinent to this conversation. There were probably things said that I, I know there were a lot of things said that I was not privy to personally. I'm going by my experience of what was relayed to me. As one elected official, I was not able to sit into any of those negotiating sessions with the, with the lawyers for the Sports Authority, with the city and the city lawyer, and with the, the Legion Executive Board. So, as far as promises made that weren't kept, I can't say anything about that. I do know that in the original design, which was set up in a storefront downtown to get public opinion as which property would be the preferred property, there were three, one out north, I think one out east, and the, and the Legion property. There was also a drawing that showed the main entrance coming in with a flag area, with marble posts, with the Legion's motto on it, or whatever. And that was named, the whole area then was named the American Legion Sports Complex, not the stadium. It was never named the American Legion Stadium, but the whole area was to be the American Legion Sports Complex, if we put in a baseball field or tennis courts or whatever. The purpose of the whole thing was for sports. I'm not sure that it's reasonable to expect to continue to have that when the costs for that were forced to be spent on something else, which is the purchase of the land. And I can't expect, I don't see how you can expect for someone to name their place after you, after the, the type of things that were said and threatened along the way, rather than being a good partner with the project. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, commissioners? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to make one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
It seems like there's been a lot spoken of tonight, and it seems like there's a general spirit of goodwill and a desire to adhere to the portion of the contract that would call for us to work with the Legion going forward. And my thought here and now is that if the commission has some will to try to seek a more holistic solution to any of the issues that you still find not to your satisfaction, and if the Legion is willing to enter into those sorts of negotiations, it might make more sense to leave all of the questions held in abeyance until that meeting might be undertaken, because I'd hate for you to piecemeal make a decision today with respect to a parking lot issue, a decision which might have implications or impact on what people's perceptions are in the big picture going forward when... when it might be more desirable to just leave today's meeting with the expectation that we've talked about some issues, some of which might even be first impression, and that the consensus is to try to work together to find a solution and maybe leave all of those questions for that discussion in hopes that a decision could be made that will, as you had earlier suggested, would make everybody happy in the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The people at home, that's Jim Murfin, our city attorney. Okay, there's no motions, so do we want to try to kind of go the direction of what Mr. Murfin said, gentlemen? Or what do you think here?
I mean, I think so. I hate that, I know we said that we'd have an answer this evening, but I feel like that could possibly be more productive than ending it as is this evening. I mean, I feel like if we just move on right now, this conversation will keep happening, and we'll keep coming up with the same solution, which is really none, other than maybe we're not going to do anything. And if that's the decision that everyone wants to make, um, or we make as a commission, then that's what we make. But I'm certainly not, I mean, I'm, I think there was an honest mistake made. I would like to see a little bit of, a little bit more of each of us coming to the table. And of course, this wasn't, it's not like these words sprung on me, but this was new to me, new history to me all this evening. So I'm not opposed to what Mr. Murfin said.
I'll act on advice of counsel, if that's the desire of everybody else. That's what I was leading to, is that we'll be making decisions every other week if we don't get this thing figured out for the long term.
Yeah.
To get it figured out for the best, for everybody.
Okay.
I agree. Look, I mean, I agree with what you're saying, with whatever, all of you said, that I think it was absolutely an honest oversight in the, on the Legion's behalf of the, of the lease agreement. I think, though, if we don't proceed with what Jim advised us to do and correct this, then we just open the city and the taxpayers up for potential oversights in the future. Because, because their, their, their executive board changes, and our commission changes, and, and you're right, you're learning new history now, a lot of us are, so, so, you know, we need to make sure that it's clearly written, and then we need to be ready to back that up for when people do make an honest mistake. Say, hey, it's clearly written out. We can't just continue, which we haven't done, but I mean, we correct it so that we don't
And I, yeah. I would, I would agree with that. And the only thing I would ask is that we try to do it, kind of put it at the top of our to-do list, and have that conversation, and try to get that engagement as quickly as possible as it makes sense. I know they had hoped to have a decision tonight. I think if we had made a decision, things would probably just stay the way they were. And I think we could probably collectively, hopefully, find a solution that's better for both parties. So that would be my only request, that we kind of get with it and keep it at the top of the list.
Sounds like you have a consensus, Mayor.
Yeah, I have a consensus. Only thing I would add is that I was disappointed that our city manager didn't do this months ago, sit down with these people. Because I mean, the longer you wait, the more everybody gets upset, and this, this should have been worked out months ago, so. We got it top of the list, and let's go forward.
But the city manager can't change the lease without, or negotiate it, unless we give him the authority to do that.
We can at least go down and talk to him, say, what would you like and what's fair? Try to work through something, so.
Well, the last consensus that the city manager got from us was the lease, it is what it is, and, and they should have came to us first.
Okay. All right.
So he was doing what he was told by the commission.
Yeah, okay. We are ready for agenda item number three, number four, Dangerous Animal Ordinance.
That's what the cameras are here for.
They're not here for budget.
I was like, what?
And the crowd comes alive.
Don't screw it up, Brad.
Try not to.
Mayor and commissioners, we were before you the last time with some information that y'all had requested from back in March regarding the dissolving the ordinance that allows pit bulls, the Staffordshire Terrier breed, in the city of El Dorado. As with lots of things, that has blossomed into not necessarily just a breed, just a change in that ordinance, but also the creation of, or the addition to, our current dangerous animal ordinance. You heard from 11 people at your last meeting that felt one way or the other towards the information that you had requested. What we were sent forth to do was to gather information from other, into other cities, other counties, that had breed-specific legislation, ones that didn't have breed-specific legislation, and ones that had dangerous animal ordinances that allowed dangerous animals. We did that. We brought you back information from those other communities, some of which experts told us to go and visit, others of which professionals in the field told us to go and visit. We did that. We brought that back to you here a few weeks ago. You heard from 11 people. We were taking good notes from those 11 people, what they said. Thus, before you tonight, you have some revisions to our current ordinances. A revision to our dangerous animal ordinance, a, a revision to our nuisance animal ordinance, which, as you think about this, probably should think about our entitled, our entire chapter six of animals, not just, not just as it pertains to dogs or dangerous animals. Because I was asked, have I ever heard a dog crow before? And I, my answer to that was no, but I have heard roosters crow before. And so, as you look at some of these changes to the nuisance ordinance, as I told you guys in, in the email that I sent you, this is going to clean up some things that we have, that we need to clean up within that chapter. One of those is, we've not done any revisions to this nuisance ordinance since we allowed chickens in town. And so, some of these things will pertain to, in the nuisance ordinance, not just to dogs as they are, but to animals as a whole. So, um, we sent it out to one of our local vets, got back their comments. Again, I think some of those questions are answered, if you think about this as a whole, animals as a whole, and not just as dogs. We also took the comments that were given to us at our last commission meeting that we were at from those folks. There is no list, if you will. There never was a list. That was one community's way to handle, um, to handle this situation. We have crafted and pulled many different, from many different sources to create this dangerous animal ordinance. The city has always, just to clarify, the city has always had a dangerous animal ordinance. Your animal could at any point in time be declared dangerous and vicious, and at that point, you had to follow a certain set of rules to be able to do that. The one you see before you tonight, we saw from many different communities. We saw two strikes, three strikes, four strikes. And my opinion is, from visiting with those folks, I don't want to give an animal four options, four chances to harm a person, another animal, a child by chance, any of those. So the ordinance, the proposal that you have before you in the dangerous animal section tonight speaks to two strikes and you're out. Staff feels that that is kind of in the middle of where everyone was at as far as tightening up the ordinance. There are, it's a substantially different fine than what we've had in the past. And then obviously gives the judge the option to make those determinations as well. Um, I'll answer any questions. You guys have had this for probably a week or so now, to be able to look at it and come up with questions. I'll do my best to answer the, I'll do the best to answer them that I can. And so there you have it. A second part of what you have before you tonight is a pit bull ordinance, which would allow folks to have the Staffordshire Terrier breed, also known as pit bulls, and mixed breeds thereof, if they register them. They would need to be registered. And again, the, the proposed ordinance for that would actually repeal your pit bull ordinance, which bans it, and this would be in that, in that place. It does require, it does require Spain, neutering, chipping, doc, photo documentation. There's lots of things that that new proposed ordinance would require of a, of an owner. There have been no, um, no mentions of any ADA requirements for a service animal. I know recently, we had an issue where someone purchased, was, was scammed, basically, and purchased it offline. They sent a picture of their dog in, and this company sent them back a certificate that said, your dog's a service dog. I think any, anybody that has been in that field very long knows that it takes a lot more than sending a picture of your dog to someone, and they send you back a patch and a certificate. There's lots of training. Those dogs are, go through extensive training to do what they're supposed to do. And, and so I guess I would caution people where that is concerned. Be careful, because there are people out there that just want to take your money. But in this, it wouldn't, it wouldn't matter. That dog would still fall under that, that breed of dog, and would still require to be, to follow the rules and the guidelines that were set up for keeping that kind of a, that breed of animal. Now, this is where staff was kind of in a catch-22. We kept hearing, we don't want breed-specific legislation, but we like this one. This is good. So no matter how you cut the proposed allowing pit bulls back in town, no matter how you cut that cake, it's still breed-specific, because it still speaks specifically to that breed. And so, you're, you're being allowed to, you would potentially be allowed to have that animal, but you would have to do certain things to be able to keep that. So in my mind, that is still breed-specific. It's not a ban, but it is still breed-specific.
Yeah.
So, and that is the only breed that is identified in any of these pages that y'all were given, or that were emailed out to anyone. That is the only breed that was specified. So, to recap quickly, if, if your animal was declared dangerous, you would, you would now flip over into a different set of rules. That would be your first strike. And if there was another incident with the animal, that would be strike two, and then you go from there, according to the guidelines that we've kind of, we've kind of set out here. So, again, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I have a quick question, and before I say that, I will encourage people. I think we kind of said at the last meeting, our goal was to hopefully have this kind of decided by October. But unlike what they saw previously, to really look into what we have right here and give us feedback, because I think this is more of what we're working with. Question on keeping of the pit bull, and maybe this is just clarification. I guess, am I understanding it correctly, that if they have a pit bull, and they went through the process of getting it registered and all that, that if it's not indoors, it either has to be on, was it a, it was a shorter leash, or a kind of a confined kennel? I guess like what I'm asking, would it be able to just be in the backyard? If it was a closed-in, fenced-in, their personal backyard?
I believe, according to what we've written, that yes, it would be able to be. Up until the point that it goes, if there were to be an incident with the animal.
Okay.
Up until that point, once, once it goes to, uh, once it becomes a dangerous animal.
Then it'll, okay.
Then I believe that.
So even, even the, okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think that once you.
Every animal starts with a clean slate.
Everybody starts with a clean slate, unless you've already been declared.
Correct.
And you could already be on our list of declared. I mean, we've, this, this ordinance is old. It's been around for a long time, and we have declared animals before dangerous.
But it, but any, any new animal, or any animal that has not previously been involved in an incident and declared dangerous, would start with zero strikes.
They got a, they got a clean count.
And maybe I'm just reading it funny, but we might look at, under that keeping of a pit bull. To me, I guess I read it as, unless the dog is securely confined indoors, or in, inside an enclosed and locked pen, or kennel, leashed or muzzled. I mean, those are kind of the, I mean, I guess to me, I read it is, it's got to be pretty well locked up, unless it's indoors.
What page are you on, Chase?
I'm at the very bottom, under keeping of a pit bull, under the pit bull portion.
Last page.
Last page.
And I, I think, well, and.
And I guess this is how I read it. I just want to clarify, if that's not our intention. I mean, you know, I do like a lot of, I like kind of what we have going for what's in place in order to get them. I like that, you know, if you're, have prior felony convictions, that right now it says you're not allowed to possess or harbor the dogs. I mean, I, I like some of that stuff.
And again, this is your, if, if there are things that are written here that you're not a fan of, now's the time to hit those comments back to us so we can make those changes.
And that was the only thing that stuck out to me. I mean, being muzzled, or in a tighter spot, an animal, to me, if they've got a back, open backyard, should be able to run. If it's your personal property and it's secured.
Right.
Obviously, it can't be, it's got to be a secured backyard.
And, and I think that's part of the reason why this was written in there, was to protect from your idea of secure, your idea of secure, and mine may be entirely different.
Well, don't we say, was there somewhere in there, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we would, I mean, if it's a registered, if they're a pit bull owner, we'd be able to go by and look at the area where the dog?
When they're going to register this animal, then that would, it's kind of like foster, not a foster kid. That we're going to do, we're going to visit, we're going to visit where the animal's going to be, and we're going to make sure that it complies, make sure that the fence isn't just a chicken wire fence, because to some, that may be a secure enough fence to hold the animal in, but.
So we'll do that at the beginning?
We'll do that as part of the registration process.
I mean, to me, if we do that, and, and our standards are, you know, met.
Right.
I think the dog should be able to go wild in the backyard if it wants to. To me, it's an, it's a dog. I shouldn't say wild, that's probably not the right word. But it should be able to be a dog, you know, run around the backyard.
Right.
Not be tied up. That's, that's the one thing that really stuck out to me. But I do appreciate you kind of getting this together and getting it to us in a timely manner, because it's, and again, I just want to reemphasize, what we looked at last time was a bunch of different stuff. And so I would encourage people, we have a lot of people who are passionate about this, to pay attention to this one. And I, I know I welcome the feedback, and hopefully, I think we'll come to something that everyone's going to be pretty well happy with.
This will be, this is posted out on our website.
It's not tonight, but it will be posted, um, probably posted under open records.
It's in the packet right now, on the new website.
Oh, it, that's right. It is on the new website. But we'll probably put it under open records as well, just so it can be easily found.
I mean, I, I, I agree with what Chase is saying. I would encourage people to get it, take, take the opportunity and read this, kind of look at this ordinance that they, that the staff put together for us. I think we all need to take some extra time and look at it as well, but.
I think one of the things that's important to point out is, as you craft an ordinance, and anyone that's done that understands that getting specific, you can be too specific when you, when you start narrowing down and trying to build a case for a specific animal. It's important that, that not only does staff have leeway to, to utilize this ordinance, so does the judge in case something happens. We don't want to identify black dogs with pink collars. We don't want to identify black dogs with pink collars. You know, I mean, it, there, there comes a point where you have to identify and then let the, let the regulatory agency do what they're supposed to do. And so rather than trying to build it around a specific animal, I think it's important to make sure that you don't take the bite out of it by narrowing things down too much.
No pun intended.
I didn't know if you'd catch that or not.
I catch everything.
Or, or by broadening it out so far that that too gives, makes us have, makes us have some problems in, in enforcing it.
Right, a couple of questions I have, one, dangerous animals. In the, the other community you looked at, it talks about the animal control officer, and then it's kind of like the one that's, at which the judgment of the director of public works. Was that what she was saying in the other cities?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because generally unless the animal control division is under the police department, most of the time it is under the direction of the public works department.
So that's the one that's going to know, makes the decision on this kind of stuff, then?
It would, it would be, it would be staff's recommendation, it would be the control officer that's dealt with the animal during the time where, you know, during the time for the investigation. That's why during, in the dangerous animal section, it also speaks to five days before you get your animal back. That way the staff can do a comprehensive analysis of how the dog behaves, what the, you know, so they have time to do the investigation, whether it's animal control staff doing it or whether it's police department doing it. It would give them the, enough time to be able to do that.
Okay, on violation of requirements for dangerous dogs.
Okay, where are you at? Hang on, okay.
One that caught my eye down at the bottom, it says, "In addition to fines provided in this section, the municipal judge shall have the authority to sentence the person adjudicated guilty on this article to serve up to a maximum of six months in jail." That seemed like that's kind of, I'm sitting there thinking, we're paying for somebody in jail for six months. That just tipped me that that was kind of hard. Now, I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
That is a, that is probably the most common portion of any animal ordinance that I read.
If you have people that go to jail for six months over their animal.
That you could put them in jail up to six months.
And that's after the, how many strikes? Is that what you're talking?
That would be, that would be at any point if the, if the, throughout the sentencing, throughout the violation period, I mean, that could be.
And that's always up to the discretion of the judge, and that would probably be a flag, pretty much a flagrant dis, multiple disregard for the ordinance.
I would hope so.
Yeah. But that's in, like I say, in all of the ones that, well, I won't say all, in a vast majority of the ones that we reviewed, that was absolutely in there to be able to, again, put some teeth in it.
If you go to the next page, down under confinement, talks about the sides of the pen, where sides, the pen must be embedded in the ground no less than two feet. But what kind of caught my eye was that when you go back to restrictions on the pit bull.
It says eighteen inches?
It says eighteen inches.
I caught that.
Okay, so I, it needs to be one way or the other, is what I'm saying.
I got you.
And I'm thinking two foot's pretty deep, you know, with rock and stuff around here, so I just, that's my opinion on that.
I've seen them go a couple of feet deep to get out from underneath the fence.
The other thing, kind of, it says, "In addition, no such animal may be kept in a house or structure when the windows or screen doors are the only obstacle preventing the animal from exiting the structure."
That is in our current ordinance as well.
Okay, I mean, I just, I was kind of learning something through that kind of stuff.
I had a neighbor dog right across the street from me, wanted to come out and play with the kids, jumped out the window, and he didn't realize that he was on the second story. So fortunately, he was fine, he bounced right back up, went right out and played with the kids, but went right through the screen, wasn't a vicious dog or anything, but did go right straight through the screen, so.
On this other one, talks about tethering here.
Mm-hmm. I didn't bring that one, I apologize.
Okay, which one are you on, tethering? I don't know if it's on there, I don't know where I got that from.
No, it was on yours, I, I forgot to print it off and bring it with mine.
Thing that kind of caught my eye, it says, "It's illegal for a dog to be tethered or chained for more than one hour in the city limits. This ordinance requires a dog must be untethered for three hours before being tethered again." I mean, that, that seems kind of how somebody's going to sit home and tether and untether and tether and untether.
You don't want them to be tethered.
We don't want them to be tethered all day.
So, and, and again, fairly common in the, I, I, I looked at three different cities on their tethering ordinances, and I think that one, a lot of that came from Topeka, the city of Topeka.
It did.
And, and when, when we looked at that, some of them had, some of them had the, you could only do so many hours a day. The animal could be out for three hours a day on tether, whatever. Again, I, I think our, our goal here is to try to eliminate the person that leaves work in the morning, tethers their animal, maybe doesn't have all of the obstacles in the backyard taken care of like they should have, and something dramatic and tragic happened to the family pet because it gets hooked up, wrapped up, et cetera. And so in light of some recent circumstances that we've had happen in the city, that was exactly what was bound to happen and did in one case where the animal lost its life, so. And again, this is not, like I told you all before when we talked about this, when we change ordinances, we start a little running tab and, and make changes, things that we find throughout the enforcement, how we enforce these. We make notes on these things to be able to come back when we make a large change to be able to make the changes. And so that's what some of these are. The tethering is absolutely that, that absolutely is not a knee jerk reaction, it's been on the list for a little while.
Dave, you got something you want to say on, you haven't said anything, have you?
This is what we're doing tonight, or what we will do in the future on this ordinance, will not stop a dog bite from happening, correct?
No, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure the people understand that, that we cannot legislate the dog not to bite. And it's a lot to do with having to put a lot of restriction on the citizens to do the right thing with their pets. One of the things I thought, found, which was what Mike found with the fenced concrete and attached to the house. I don't know how many pit bull owners or dog owners or vicious dog owners also rent and unable to make those modifications to the, their, their house without the consent of the landlord, nor do many landlords want that done to their house. How are we going to address renters not being able to comply with the building, the building codes for a pen?
And again, that's, that's entirely up to you folks if you want to remove that. That's in our current ordinance. And, and again, that's, just move straight over to this one, it's, it's worked well for however many years that, that we have had that, and so that's it, that's a part of our current ordinance, and, and you can choose to remove it and not have a requirement for a pen in a backyard. We'll do exactly as you instruct us to do.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering, if it's in there, how are, how are you going to deal with it from a public works, a head, head guy going out to several rental, rental properties without being able to have kennels built, one by the person not being able to afford, or the thousand dollars worth of work that has to be put into a kennel for, with a concrete floor dug two foot deep, attached to the house with a roof?
I would say maybe they need to select a different breed of dog to have as a pet if they can't afford it.
I understand that, but, but that's the issues we're going to hit, so I'm asking the question when it arises.
And I tried to answer it.
I don't, I can't tell people what they can buy or not buy or keep as a pet.
There's also.
I can't legislate that.
Also, within this, there is an insurance requirement. Now, I will tell you that most of the insurance companies that we spoke to, that we called and did research on, said, "We, we won't insure them. We won't insure the people if we know they have that animal." Again, that requirement initially in 1989, when this, when the pit bull ban was initially put into place, that requirement was taken out. And so the, for the period of time that the ones that were grandfathered in, in late eighties, they did not have to provide, they did not, the insurance requirement was not there. The commission at that time removed that requirement. So, again, at any time, you can remove any part of this or add to if, as you wish.
Well, that was the second part of my question is, is if you're renting, I don't know, I'm not an insurance person, but do they sell dog liability insurance policies on their own? Because most of the time that will fall under house ownership policy.
And again, like I said, the ones that we called and we tried to get a, a vast, we tried to get the majority of the insurance companies that folks in El Dorado would have the best chance of having, and none of them said they would insure just the dog or an additional, I'm not an insurance guy either, but I think they said a rider policy to be able to have that dog. And again, some of them said, "If we know that you have that breed of dog," and, and they, a lot of rattled off a list of dogs that they will not insure the property if you have that breed of dog. And so, again, to what I said earlier, you can absolutely remove that, you can make whatever changes that you feel are, are prudent for the folks to have the, for the folks to have the dog. Now, I also think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, we've had, I have taken lots of phone calls, and by lots, I mean more than a dozen, since our last meeting, asking why are we rele, why are we lifting the ban on, on this breed of dog? What's, what's pushing the city to do this? And my response was exactly what, what Bill talked about earlier. We had a, a person come that wanted to repeal that ordinance so that they could have the family pet in El Dorado and, and have it there legally. And so, again, I would say I've had more than a dozen calls of people going, "Really? Why? What, what's pushing you to do this?" I'll also tell you that in my research of calling other cities, there have been, there are several cities in the state of Kansas that have repealed their bans, their breed specific bans on pit bulls. And in talking with them, I can think of three or four right off the top of my head that said, "Wish we'd never done it." Now, I've also talked to several that didn't have an opinion one way or the other, they, they said they didn't get an influx of man eating pit bulls in their community when they did this. And so the city version, the city take from city leaders in the cities that we called was, was six of one, half a dozen other. There was nothing, they too were maybe more of a knee jerk reaction to having someone come and say, "Hey, we want this changed." As I told you when I was here the last time, about every seven years or so, we have a group that wants to make that change. That's what prompted all of this discussion to be had at the time was, was that, so.
Just to comment on that real quick, I would just reemphasize again, you know, going into making this decision, if anyone has any thoughts, to let them be known, because personally, I could say, I have only received one phone call with anyone who's been against the idea of us changing this. I know there's more, but I'm just saying in my experience, so I'm glad that you've shared that, because I've kind of wondered where the balance has been. I've probably received more emails and calls on this issue than any issue since I've been a part of the commission.
We haven't changed how we pick up your trash for a while, just wait, that'll.
Yeah.
Trash and dogs.
I only have received one, one who is strongly opposed to it, and so I'm glad that you've shared that, because I've kind of wondered, I don't know what it's been like for the rest of you.
I've had, I've had several that said they didn't want to, they didn't want to put waves in the pond, meaning they didn't, they didn't feel good about coming to your meetings and, and, and head to head with the people that.
Yeah.
They didn't feel good, they didn't want that confrontation.
Well, and I'll just go ahead and reemphas, I mean, they're going to talk about our new website. Our contact info is pretty easy to find with this, but you can feel free to call or email. You know, we don't have to do it this way.
Right.
But I welcome any thoughts, because I have, up until this point, I've received one phone call with anyone that was against the whole idea. I've received hundreds of emails, and I'm not, I don't have a pet, I don't, but I'm just saying, it's been, it's been interesting. There hasn't been much balance as far as the communication that's come to me, and so I appreciate you sharing that, and just, I really do. I encourage anyone who's got strong opinions to share them.
I haven't had any, I think I had one, a negative a while back, recently, I've had two phone calls and one face to face that were in favor. Brad, I want to commend you and your staff both. I think this took a lot of time and thought, and it's, I don't know if we ever ride or pass a perfect ordinance, but I think this is a, a good ordinance. Addressing, I mean, people that, that want this breed of dog and if, and are willing to jump through the hoops, for lack of a better word, I, I think, I think it's a good ordinance. Staffordshire pit bull ownership isn't for everybody, and if you can't meet the financial responsibility or don't have the means, then I'll reiterate, go get something different.
Don't need a dog isn't for everybody.
Yeah, collie ownership may not be for everybody as well.
So, and that's, that's about all I have to say on it. I, I think this does give the people that do desire to own and keep a pit bull, a means to do it that I don't think is out of line. Yes, there is some added expense there, but that's just the way things are sometimes. I'd love to have a Corvette, but I can't afford one, or the insurance, or the tickets I'd probably get with it, so.
Or the garage to put it in.
I don't have one. So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
I will say that I've, I've received mixed phone calls and emails and personal conversations running into people at Dillon's or Walmer. I have had a handful that, that were adamantly against changing the ordinance. I've also spoke to quite a few people that are either in favor of making a change or just indifferent. I think that, as Nick said, and I think we all, well, pit bull ownership or dog ownership in general may not be for everybody, it's important to make sure that, that we understand, that, that the owner understands what they're getting into, whether they're getting a pit bull or a dachshund, so. The big thing for me is I encourage the public to go to the website, look at this ordinance, understand it. Chase said that all of our contact information is out there. Make sure that you get ahold of us, whether it's email or, or phone, and let us know your thoughts and, and your opinions as it pertains to this, this issue, because I think it's important that everybody, that everyone's voice is heard in El Dorado, and that's the reason that we've given this, the time that we've given this, since it was brought to us in, I think March is when we started this, this time. And, and it's been important to all of us, I know it's been important to me, it's been important to all of us to, to really vet this out. You said, you know, every seven years or so this comes up, but I wasn't here seven years ago, so it's important that we all really understand what we're looking at and what, what we're either getting into or what we're denying people to do. And so I think that, I think this is a great opportunity to get out, really understand the ordinance, send questions to us. There's also contact information on the website for Public Works, for.
If you, if you have questions about it, and you don't, you don't mind, like, if they don't mind sending them to you as well, but also allowing staff to have that, that chance to answer those questions.
Sure.
Because they may be, they may be more detailed than what y'all feel comfortable answering.
Right, so if you've got, if you've got technical questions about the ordinance, you, Public Works contact information is out there, Animal Control's contact information, staff, so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of resources on our website to be able to utilize to better understand this. And I encourage everybody to do that, so that we all really know what we're talking about when we come together and try to make a real decision here. I, I think it's best that we all make an educated decision, decision and an informed decision, and I think that this process is allowing us to do that. I think in March, when this was brought to us, if, if we would have just said, "All right, let's get rid of the ban," or "Let's keep it in place," we wouldn't have been making an informed decision, and that's not fair to, it's not fair to the citizens, it's not fair to the pit bull owners or the people that maybe have an objection to it. So this is an opportunity to, to read the ordinance, understand it, ask the questions so that we can make an informed decision. informed decision.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we just wanted to point out while we're talking about it, the website is www.ldocs.com, or E-L-D-O-K-S dot com, and if you go to the city government at the top and choose City Commission, and scroll down, you'll find your contact information and phone number and email. And so, anyone can go do that, and then Mr. Myers is available on the Public Works site.
Meyer, Mr. Meyer.
Meyer.
It's, it's really Brad, it's okay.
I'm having trouble for the Mr. Meyer, not the...
Wow.
Well, one thing I'd like, Brad, if you had time and would, that Director of Humane Society, I'd be interested in sending this to her and seeing if she had any comments to make on this, because I think she would add, I was impressed sitting next to her that day, that she'd been around all these deals, and it'd be interesting to see.
She'll be impressed, we plagiarized a lot of it.
Well, that's okay, as long as, as long as we get the, as long as we get the right thing.
She ought to be happy, because it's, we plagiarized it like you know it.
And, and the other thing, I, you know, I still would like to, I'm not saying the vet, we gotta have a name to it, but I think the vets need to know that this is out there and try to get some kind of comment from them.
We, we have the one that, that kept requests, that requested copies.
Yeah.
We, we have sent that, I have their, their comments back about it. Jamie, Jamie's here. The others, we, we got no response when we sent out letters and emails and all that to them about wanting to be involved in it. So, again, El Dorado Animal Clinic has been gracious enough to help with their thoughts and opinions on it, taking those into consideration.
And again, I, I appreciate El Dorado Animal Clinic's input and continued input in this, because it's been valuable. But I encourage all citizens of El Dorado...
Absolutely.
To, to get out and read this, to understand it. Especially if you have a desire to be a pit bull owner, you've gotta know what you're getting into, and you've gotta know what the, you know, kind of what your potential requirements are gonna be. So, everybody needs to get out, who feels like they're gonna have a, who feels like they're gonna have a stake in this, everyone's gotta get out and, and understand what the, what the implications are for this ordinance, both of these ordinances.
Right.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Gary Ball, 817 West Fourth. I'm a retired mailman. I like the ordinance the way it is. I walk early mornings, I go up to Jefferson, and I always carry a stick, because I've been attacked every way you can name it, it doesn't matter, through screens, out car doors, and my grandson was being harassed last year, and the city helped me out on that. I used the whole data, surveyed the dog, he was walking home from school. I'm gonna explain it to you like this. I've been attacked 699 times, and that's, I've been retired four years, I quit counting. When you put this ordinance in, you can tell, the older you are, you know what a pit bull looks like, even though you gotta check the molar to find out. I've been attacked by poodles, okay? A poodle can't grab a 14-inch tire and shake it, we agree to that. Been attacked by weenie dogs, same thing. Now, even a German shepherd, he can't grab that tire and shake it, but he can grab it. Now, you go up to rottweiler, he can shake it a couple times. You go up to that pit bull, he's a little bit stronger, stronger neck, and I know he can shake that tire eight or 10 times, because when I saw that happen, I took off running the other way. I wasn't sure if he was confined or not. I don't know if it's in your ordinance or not, but it's kind of like, you know, if there's a daycare, you've gotta pay so much money, if you've got a daycare, and let people know you've got a daycare in that area, and they actually have to approve it. I think that's still that way in the city. I'd like to see if that's in the, put this in the ordinance. If you're gonna have a pit bull, you're gonna follow these rules. You still need some checks by those neighbors, because if that dog bites one person in that neighborhood, it's probably gonna be a kid, and that just happened in Wichita. So, I think the people with, in the city limits, and they have a pit bull, follow these regulations, the city should send out and make that part of their fee. I don't know what you're gonna do, same, some, the same thing like you have for daycare, but so the people know that it's there. That's just my opinion, so, and...
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
That's funny, I was wondering if we were ever gonna hear from a mailman. I had never did, if I figured they'd probably know.
Thank you for waiting.
No problem. Patricia Howard again. I think it comes down to, honestly, it's responsible dog owners, whether it be a pit bull, whether it be a chow, whether it be a German shepherd, be a poodle. The pit bull that I know is, she's never been out. She's never been out running the streets. She's, you know, she's very well, well-maintained. She's not allowed to be here because, you know, she's a pit bull. The ordinance should be changed, in my opinion, to the dog, not the breed. I understand there are bad dogs out there. Yes, there is. It should be by the dog, not by, not by the pit bull, not by the breed, whether it be a rottweiler, a pit bull, anything. It comes down to responsible dog ownership. If you can take care of it, you want to abide by the rules, like the spaying, the neutering, chipping, insurance, and my, like, people I know that have the dog do have her carried on their insurance in El Dorado. She's no longer there, she's in the county now. Hopefully she can get this passed and get her dog back. But there is insurance companies in El Dorado that will carry it, they have her as a rider around the house. But it comes down to responsible dog ownerships. No, I agree with that.
Can you speak to your address?
Patricia Howard, 4034 Southwest 10th. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, read this and see what you think of it.
I haven't read the whole thing, but I will.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Commissioners, my name is Dean Adamson, 4034 Southwest 10th, El Dorado. Mr. Myers has continuously used the word dangerous. It is, in my personal opinion, as being around animals all my life, my mother has raised canine, trained canine, shepherds, rottweilers on pits. My personal opinion is, it is not the dog, it is the owner that has the dog and that has trained the dog to do what it does, in reference to the mail carrier gentleman here. Most animals are in their surroundings, it's their territory. Okay, if a stranger's walking in to your yard, you're gonna get bit regardless of the dog, whether it be a chihuahua, a poodle, a dachshund. Okay, I recently had a rottweiler that I put down myself, because it bit too many people, too many times, myself included. As far as the pit bull is concerned, and not to get off the topic, when you guys put these ordinances together, who comprises the ordinances, as far as like this new one that's coming out now, with insurance and all that? Who, is it the Commissioners that comprise it, or is it Mr. Myers?
It's city staff, and then, and then we review it and we approve the ordinance.
Okay. To me, it sounds like, I, I, I'm for the microchipping and the other stuff, but if, a lot of people in city of El Dorado, now the economy's not as good as the maybe it was back then, a lot of people can't afford, as I believe Mr. Chapman was stating earlier, can't afford to do all the provisions that are asked. That's, to me telling me that we're gonna do it anyway, we're gonna ban the dog, whether you can afford to do it or not. There should be some kind of a stipulation or some kind of a, a level to where some people who can't afford it can be able to, one way or another, if that makes any sense. Again, being a personal dog lover, I think that it's the owner's responsibility, yes, I agree, but again, it's all in how the animal is trained. If Mr. Myers was to walk into my yard unannounced, one of my dogs would probably go wild, because that's what they're trained to do. I live out in the country, I don't live out in the city. And there is a difference between a city animal and a country animal. But again, it's all in how the animal is trained. If the owner does not take care of their dog and train their dog to be vicious, then yeah, it's a dangerous dog, and something should be done with it. That's my personal opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, gentlemen. I really appreciate the consideration you've given on this pit bull thing, most especially because I'm vitally interested in one, who is the therapy dog of my daughter, who has emotional problems that were constantly troubling her, until we found the answer, which is a pit bull dog, a very special one. And she has lived in the back of a minivan in very hot weather, she's lived in the back of the minivan in very cold weather, she most recently spent some time in jail over this pit bull dog, whose only guilt is that he was born a pit bull. I do appreciate your consideration, and this dog is fully covered for all the stipulations. If there are any more, well, we would do that as well. Thank you.
Peggy, you might give your name and address.
Peggy Borben, 432 Ohio, here in El Dorado.
Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jamie Turner, 300 South Main. Most of you know I work for the El Dorado Animal Clinic and have for a number of years. I think that the city has done a very good job on the ordinance. I think there's just a few tweaks that might need to be done for things that could be taken out of the context of how the city originally intended. A couple of them are on the nuisance animal ordinance, creates noxious or offensive odors. Some people are gonna be against chickens. They're gonna be against the smell of chickens, no matter how clean those pens are kept. So, I do think that perhaps that does need to be termed a little bit, clarified a little bit more. Also, creates an insect breeding or attraction site due to an accumulation of excrecia. And there again, in the summertime, as everybody knows, the moment it hits the ground, flies are going to be on it. So, again, a little bit more clarification on that, I think will solve some problems that could arise in the future. On the dangerous animal section on the second page, where it says that the animal caused injury other than killing or serious physical harm to any person or killed any other animal, I do think that that needs to specify that that's off of the animal's property. Because if somebody comes on to your property, or an animal comes on to your property, a stray cat, neighbor's animal, whatever, and the animal is protecting their own property, that should be considered a little bit different than if the animal is off of, off of your property and causes damage or harm. Also, I don't think that it's quite fair to term a nuisance animal as a dangerous animal. Once you term that animal as a dangerous animal, then the person could be sub, subject to all kinds of different insurance requirements. Termining the dog as a dangerous animal because it's a nuisance also can keep them from being able to place the dog somewhere else in another city, because a lot of cities do have regulations against that. And it might be that the person simply cannot house the animal properly, but they could give it away to somebody or sell it to somebody that could house it properly in another town. And if it's, if it's deemed a dangerous animal because of a nuisance, that's going to limit them on their ability to place that animal. On the next, next page, the violation of requirements for a dangerous dog, down in the section under attack on other animal, I think that it needs to be changed on another domestically-owned animal. There again, to eliminate the possibility of it killing a squirrel or a stray animal that gets into their yard. On the next page, on the confinement, yes?
I just want, I think that he changed that. I mean, it's changed our copy.
It may have been, it may have been changed on yours. It may have been changed on yours. On the confinement indoors, you mentioned when the windows or, or screen doors are the only obstacle. I do think that that should be changed to window screens, because otherwise somebody could say, there's just, there's windows, they're glass windows.
Yeah.
So, there again, just to prevent problems in the future. Things that we would think are common sense, might not necessarily be termed common sense. And other than that, I think it's a very good ordinance.
My only comment, and something you said, and I'm kinda saying this to you, and I don't know the answer, but I'm thinking about it. In regards to the dangerous dog and the attack, and it happening on or off the property, would it, could we do something more along the lines of indoors? Because to me, even if they attacked the mailman, who can be, I mean, doing his job on your, on your property, delivering your mail, or if it was a group of kids, I don't know. I guess I look at that differently versus being in the backyard or like indoors. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, I agree with you, Jamie, and, and maybe it's an opportunity for you and Brad to kinda try and figure out some language there, because I, I agree with what you're saying in, in concept. That being said, if I'm sitting at your house, having tea, and your non-vicious chihuahua kills me, just because I'm in, in the house, I don't, you know, I, I wouldn't want, so maybe we've gotta figure out how to...
Just some, just some clarification and some tweaking, I think.
I drink tea.
Okay.
All right.
Just relax, Nick.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, I think we got kind of our marching orders of where we go from here. If anybody wants anything else, we're ready to go to the next agenda.
Just want to thank everybody for their input and...
Again, I can't stress this enough, I encourage everyone to go to the website, look at the ordinance, submit your comments to us, to staff, so that we all can, can view this intelligently, hopefully.
I agree with Bill on that. Please, please read it.
I, I think, kind of, according to last meeting, our goal was to get this presented, have time to talk about it, and then we make a decision in October, I think was kind of our goal. So, I think we want to give plenty of time for the community to be able to get it into their hands, get some feedback, kinda tweak some things, and then formally talk about it as a decision, I think.
I would agree.
Okay, we're ready for agenda item number five, which is a farmer's market.
You guys don't want to stick around for that?
Who would like to talk about farmer's market? You going to, Suzy?
I'm going to.
Okay.
Last week, we were asked to provide you all, or last commission meeting, we were asked to provide you all with a business plan for the market. You should have received that in an email, I believe you got it on Wednesday or Thursday last week. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about that or the project in general.
I'll start, real quickly. I, again, this is one of those deals where I haven't had a lot of balanced feedback. I've had a lot of feedback, a lot of people excited about it, but now, talking to a few people, they say they talked to a lot of people who aren't excited about it. I guess I encourage with all issues, if you feel passionately about something, always feel free that you can email or call us, and if you want that conversation to be private, I can speak for, I respect that, so. After hearing feedback from the community, the biggest concern I was getting, can you kind of explain if someone wanted to be a vendor or be a part of using the facility as the market? I know there's kind of an option... I know there's kind of an option to rent it out for certain events, if you will. But if they were to do that, what, what's, what are the main guidelines? I mean, do they have to carry a certain amount of insurance? Is that something you have on hand you can kind of explain?
So there's kind of two challenges associated with your question. The first one is, without the building, there is no need to answer any of those questions. So we can't really put the cart before the horse, in that sense. To, the business plan that we provided you is some guidelines that we can work off of, but it doesn't have to be anything that's set in stone. Without the building, all of those conversations are kind of moot points. But we did put a few things in the business plan in regards to utilizing the facility, if we owned the facility, and were operating it in the way that we feel like it should be. Those include having the special event permit, just like any other use of a city facility has a special event permit, except for the Civic Center, which has its own rental agreement, obviously, and the Train Depot. And then it just discusses vendors paying sales tax, providing that kind of information if they are utilizing the facility and just maintaining those state standards.
Okay, so the insurance deal, I mean, that, we can't even have that discussion until.
That's part of the special event permit. There is a, a piece that requires you to have carry liability insurance. That's, and that's currently part of what everyone has when they have events in El Dorado. There's an, there's an insurance piece.
And Suzy, if you don't mind, maybe I talk a little bit about the history and maybe the concept of this farmer's market. I think some of you all may remember, probably three years ago, we started discussing the concept of a farmer's market, locations, and we looked at different areas all around town of city-owned property, looked at the idea of constructing new buildings. It seemed to be something the community was desiring at that point. So we started looking into the cost, maybe where a good location would be, what sort of activities would occur there. So I just wanted to mention that, so it just wasn't this sole location, just a, you know, quick response type action. This is, we've discussed this throughout the years, off and on.
We looked at building, possibly building a canopy over the city parking lot behind.
Downtown, weren't you?
Downtown.
Fiesta Mexicana.
We looked at building over Gordy Street, next to Gordy Park. Yeah, this has been driven by the commission for the last three or four years.
And I can only speak for, again, the people that reach out to me with feedback in regards to this issue. And of course, a lot of them, it's kind of been a generational thing. I think younger generational folks are really excited about the concept. You see some of these kind of facilities in other communities, and they really flourish. But the biggest concern with that is accessibility to utilizing it, if you were someone who offered a product. Because we live in a world today where it's very easy, you know, to get on social media or the internet and sell your product, your goods, do it all there. And so I guess, you know, being able to compete and actually get in it and use it has been the biggest question I've heard coming back. You know, like if a lady down the street makes awesome cinnamon rolls and everyone wants to buy them, can she go down for a decent deal and sell them without having to carry certain amounts of insurance and?
And part of that is regulated by the state. And so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have much of a say in that as far as what kind of goods can be sold at registered farmer's markets. They're state mandated. If that was the course that the building went down, was being a registered farmer's market.
This, this, this might be something interesting, Suzy, if we could put this on the internet too, so people can read this business plan.
I would agree with that.
It's all available.
We can look at that. Was you going to say something?
We have a new website that'll be very easy for people to find things like that.
I have it up on the screen right now.
Pretty easy. Well, it might not be easy, but for most, it's going to be a lot more accessible.
You know, I've, I've had a lot of comments, a lot of feedback about, about this. And it's, it's been something that, again, like Scott and Suzy both said, we've discussed quite a bit over the last, I would say, at least three years, three and a half years. There were, there were a lot of different kind of options, and we looked at some, some other scenarios as to where to kind of build, build out this farmer's market concept. All, the vast majority of the comments that I've received about this have been positive. It's an opportunity, again, for, for a community space that, that, that we can share. I agree with Chase, some of those thoughts, you know, how easy is it going to be to, to set this up? But I think all that plays out, as you spelled out in the business plan, when you talk about, you know, creating kind of that, that governing or advisory board for that, to create those bylaws and really understand. But again, you don't need to do any of that if you're not acquiring a building or a space to do it, so.
Right.
I would say that I've, I've had a lot of very, very positive feedback about the concept of a community market. And, and one of the biggest things in this location that we're looking at now is that, that there's the potential to be able to provide those spaces for fresh produce or for, for produce for the farmer's market year-round, kind of even during inclement weather, when it's raining out, where, where they don't have, maybe the farmer's market isn't, south of town isn't going because it's, because of the rain. This is a sheltered area and a historic building downtown. So as Chase talked about, kind of generational, you know, there, there's, I've had two, two different views that, that people have talked to me about. And one of those is, you know, as Chase said, you know, kind of it's, it's a newer thing and it's, it's becoming real popular, and it's a good opportunity for, for that community, from a younger generation. But one of the other comments that I've gotten from a handful of different people is, is being able to utilize some of our historic buildings downtown. And this is an opportunity to kind of breathe some new life into, into a historic building. And this, if I understand correctly, this building is on the, has Kansas Historic Register?
It's a, what's the word I'm looking?
Qualifying historic building, and it's within our historic district.
It's within our, okay. So those are just some of the comments that I've got. I, I, I'm, I'm supportive of it. I've been supportive of the, of the concept for, for three years. I think that our sales tax committee, who's an advisory board that, that we've appointed, that goes out and, and talks to, you know, the citizens and really kind of tries to keep their finger on the pulse of, of some of those things that the community wants, they were in favor of it, and that's the reason they recommended it to us.
And if I can just real quickly add, I mean, I'm with Mike, and I think they're going to explain to people watching, um, and people here, a little bit about the new website that just rolled out. And I do think it is our big step at trying to achieve better communication and people being able to get information easily and things like this. And so I encourage you to find this and look at it. And again, I welcome all feedback. Because I've kind of just heard one side of the story as far as, I think, what people are thinking. But also, I don't want to sound like, I don't want to sound negative in this, and this is just one of my thoughts in regards to this. But we've, we've seen a few struggles with some small businesses in town. Not all of them, not a lot of them, but some of them. And there is a, a lot of people in our community that specialize in certain trades, that have products that they sell on their own. And I think this would be an opportunity to kind of house some of that. And I think that could be unique for us. And I know, I think it was last Christmas, in conjunction with the Christmas festivities, they set up kind of a craft trade show downtown. Really, I believe, kind of short notice, but it was, it was filled, and a lot of people were going in and out, and they really enjoyed it. But majority of those folks have to do their business out of their home because they don't have the means to do it in full capacity. So I think this could be an exciting opportunity. I see where people have a lot of questions and concerns. I'm right there with you on those. But as we kind of face some issues, maybe we can kind of fill in the gaps with something like this. And, and again, too, not trying to, but, and hopefully, with some of that, there's been several organizations in town talking about incubator space, and I'm not at all saying this is similar to this. But you might see people have some success and find some confidence in what they're doing with their trades and take it to the next step. I, I don't know. But I think, I think the conversation is healthy, that we keep having this. And I do, again, encourage people to make the effort to look at the plan and give us your feedback.
And our next step in the process would be to have a community stakeholders meeting, where those people do get to come and, and talk it out because we want the community to own the space and the people that are going to be utilizing the space to be a big part of that. And we've been in contact with the Rural Center in Wichita and then also the Extension Office to facilitate that conversation. So it, it wouldn't even be facilitated by the city, but an opportunity for them to really have a discussion about the future.
Ready for my questions?
I'm so ready.
Okay. Who wrote this business plan?
Staff.
The staff, city staff?
Yep.
Okay. I didn't see this till last week, but when I, I read through this thing, I sure had a feeling that the 4H covers many areas mentioned in this market plan. You know, that when you go read down through this and say, well, who's doing it now? And, and we kind of get to overlapping, in my opinion, a little bit. And I think when we look at the Humana Building we got out west, the Depot that we've got, the Civic Center, the 4H Building, we've, we've got a lot of buildings around town that people could use for this kind of thing, so.
Can you?
We're kind of taking one more building. I, I would rather the city get out of some properties instead of getting into properties.
Can you give me some specific things that you think the Extension Office covers now? Because they were one of the big proponents of us purchasing the building and utilizing it for the things that are described.
I'd have to read through that. I, there, there's a part that kind of goes into here that talks about the comprehensive plan, encourage and protect land use that are vital to health, safety, and welfare. Encourage active coordination between the City of El Dorado and local economic development organizations. Develop tools to assist the city, historic preservation, and others. Provide cost-effective support, uh, sport and non-sport programming for individuals of age, income, and skill level.
Those are all objectives in our 2030 comprehensive plan that we felt the building could potentially meet.
And when I read that, I just, I just thought it was stretching it a little bit, Suzy. That was just me, you know, when reading that.
What parts do you think are stretched? And I can try to add why we, try to tell you why we thought those could be met.
I understand what you're saying there, but I'm, I'm saying that I feel like that when you talk about the young adults in town, 4H covers a lot of that, in just my personal opinion.
I mean, do you want her to clarify some of it, or?
Well, I'd have to sit down. I've got a bunch of this. I can't tell you where that's at, to be honest with you. I just had that feeling that I wanted to tell you, and I wrote down here. And, and I'll try to explain that to you later. I'd have to reread that.
And I'm happy to provide you the letter that the Extension Office wrote. It was in the sales tax committee that the Extension Office wrote in favor of the project.
Yeah. I guess if this is such a great deal, and I, and I'm not against farmer's markets, don't get me wrong. I guess I'm questioning why the city has to get involved. If it's such a great deal, why isn't that pushed by the Chamber of Commerce or somebody else other than the city? I think the city should be focused on some of the basics that we do instead of going around trying to look for things to get into. And if that is a good enough project, somebody's going to pick that up and go with it. And it should be somebody other than the city. That's just my opinion on that kind of deal. One thing back here that's kind of on my mind right now, when you look at your income projections, you had displaced sales tax 194784. How did you arrive at that number?
We ran our impact model that we've used to understand the sales tax and transient guest tax on many of our events.
That rapid market assessments? I read that. It's called an RMA. Did you run an RMA on this deal?
No, we used our own impact model that was developed by Wichita State. And it's proven to be fairly accurate in almost everything that we've run in.
So this, this is saying that we had displaced sales tax $194,784 worth of sales. We're going to have those kind of sales in a year's time?
That's the potential based off numbers that we acquired from local farmer's markets and other people that were, said they would come sell and the pounds of produce they would sell.
And then anticipated new sales tax?
Correct.
Was based on $23,406, so we're talking almost a quarter million dollars worth of sales that we're going to make in order to make those kind of sales taxes.
No, $234.06.
No, but I'm saying that that's one cent of whatever you're selling. So you're talking $23,000 worth of sales to collect $234.
Potentially, in a year. I'd, I'd rather show you the model so you can look at exactly what numbers we ran, but those are the numbers that it generated.
I just don't think a, a market's going to sell a quarter million.
I'm happy to show you the numbers that have been accurate in the past, so.
From the Master's Program, Wichita State?
Yeah.
Correct. Linda Jolly ran it as Inc., and now that software is used by, well, it's not software, it's just a program, but it's used by the CBB now.
Annual projected costs. You know, I don't see where we worked, talked about cost in there. And I wrote some that I'm thinking that we need to consider, like insurance on the building, the liability insurance, the wind fire, that kind of stuff. The maintenance and upkeep on this building.
Would be very minimal at the beginning. Basically, the upkeep would be done at the beginning of the project, so you'd get it up to code. And, and very minimal beyond that. If you've seen the space, you would know why the upkeep would be minimal.
Okay. Has anybody got out and looked at the roof? Have we done inspection? Have we had a third-party inspection on this building?
We had a structural engineer from Wichita come and walk through the building with us.
Okay.
And if I can, just to throw in there to specify for the community, we're looking at the barn portion, correct?
Right, not the do-it-yourself.
Yeah, like I, I think a lot of people, or at least some of the people I was talking to, thought that we were getting the entire facility.
The lumber, the lumberyard.
Like the commercial space that had the air conditioning and heating and.
Right, there'd be no, no heating and air.
Yeah, just to specify that.
Correct.
I thought I read in here about some meeting rooms.
Potentially in the future. There is a space in the front that has been utilized as office space before, but at the beginning, which is very clear in here, none of that would be utilized for the initial use of the space.
So we're not going to have any heating and air in those meeting rooms? And we're not going to have any electric or gas cost?
No, you're, you're taking what I said out of context. There wouldn't, to initially use the space for the purposes that are in this plan, we would not need any heating and air. If we chose to develop those meeting spaces, which is why it's in the future development opportunities section of the business plan, then there would be potential costs associated with that. But to utilize the building as a farmer's market or a community market space or any sort of space, it doesn't need.
And to recognize those income projections that you've made using the.
We're talking about swinging those big doors open on both sides on nice days and it being, you know, pretty much a shell.
Yep.
Just to keep people out from the weather and.
Right.
Have we signed a contract on this building?
I believe so. I can't answer that fully. I stepped away from the project.
Then if we've already signed a contract?
You all asked us to bring the business plan, so that is what I.
How much did we buy the building for?
Did. The building cost is there. $72,000 was the cost of the building.
That's what the building cost?
Yep.
Okay. Good. It talks about unlike any facility in our area, the refurbished lumberyard building. Who's going to pay for the refurbishing and what are we, what's that going to cost?
The, and, and Jim, maybe you could step in, but is the contract still contingent on some issues? I mean, the purchase hasn't been fulfilled, right?
The last I knew, it had not been completed, but I hadn't spoken.
Mr. Martin, will you pull that mic over or go to Ed?
The last I knew, the contract had not been consummated, but I had prepared a contract that was, from my point of view, complete. So I couldn't speak to whether others in the city had moved forward with that or not.
And last, and may not, last I was aware, it was still in the process of title review and, and some due diligence work.
I think, that's, that's what I know to be true as well, but not saying it 100%.
I was told as well, I think, previously, the direction of the commission after the sales tax. sales tax suggestion and us approving that was that we were in full support, or the majority was.
Right. After the budget was approved, that's when.
Yeah.
We started to move forward with the project a little bit more heavily because it was included in the 2015 budget in the CMP projects.
Who brought that to the sales tax committee?
I did.
So this is city staff driven?
At, at the.
At the behest of the city commission.
Correct. I was, I was asked to work on the project and I did so and did the research that I was asked to do and then I presented it to the sales tax committee with the support letters from Kids Need to Eat, Newmana, the Extension Office, Main Street, Butler County Health Department, as well as individual growers and sellers in our area.
Okay, here's, here's one that kind of caught my eye and I'm talking about farmer's market deal, Suzy, that catches my eye. The market must establish an advisory board with regular meeting schedule. A city designated must be a voting member of the said board. The board would be responsible for managing the market under the established bylaws. The city commission reserves the right to create an official advisory board at any time. The City of El Dorado will reserve as a fiscal agent for the farmer's market until such time that the market can demonstrate a legal form of ownership. You go down into the person that's in there, its vendor says, all vendors are required to adhere to all local, state, and federal laws, regulation, rules, guidelines, and codes that are applicable to the production, processing, transportation, and marketing of their respective products. Requirements regarding production, processing, transportation, and marketing shall be obtained from the Bureau of Food and Drug, Department of Health and Environment, Kansas Department of Agriculture, and Department of Revenue. All prepared food vendors shall carry product liability and general liability and must furnish a copy of certificates of insurance to the City of El Dorado at least three days prior to vending a community. My reason for reading all this is that is so complicated that the average Joe that's out there selling tomatoes.
That's the law, that's the law.
Well, I'm selling, then, then he can take the law on that end, but once the city gets involved with this thing.
We, well, we should be.
Aren't we going to make sure all these laws are being, you know, observed?
We should be, as.
If they're outside the city limits, do we have to?
They're not, there are no.
If they're selling it inside the city limits.
If they're sitting inside the city, we should be requiring them to follow these standards.
Well, I'm just telling you that there is so much to this. I'm questioning whether we can sell a quarter of a million dollars worth of sales.
Well, I think that's the point where we need to write our elected officials in Topeka and in the United States and ask them to review those policies because that's not City of El Dorado, that's state and federal law.
Yeah. Well, I, I go back to my statement that the city owns enough property right now.
And I, I.
And this adding another piece of property that comes off the tax rule, I'm just not fair.
Did you, I have a table here that shows the property tax detail for 2013.
Yeah.
And then how the project could potentially impact those agencies and I'm happy to share those numbers with you all again. I've shared them in the past, but I, I have a printout with the numbers.
Yeah. Go ahead.
There is a typo at the bottom of this, just as a caveat before I hand it out to you.
I, I guess what I'm saying is that if this is such a great deal, let's let somebody else get in free enterprise and make this work instead of the city getting in with taxpayers' money and getting behind this kind of thing. This is where I'm coming from.
And we are, we were simply acting off of the wishes of the commission in the past and the wishes of the commission two weeks ago, as well as what we were directed after sales tax and then also after the budget was approved and this was in the budget for 2015 as a capital improvement project.
I'm just concerned we'll wake up five years from now and have more expenses than income and the newness will wear off of it and then we'll have another wind turbine.
That's, I'm not going to speak on the wind turbine, but that's always a possibility and we would hope that it was not.
It's a project to go through and.
Well, I think you're going to take that risk with anything you do. Anytime you move forward with any kind of progress, you know, you can never be definite when you're making decisions towards.
I really don't think people are going to quit eating.
Well, that, that gets into, like, it's like natural gas, we're going to start selling natural gas. And at what point does the city, what, what should the city be doing? Is it our job to go out? The next thing, we could go into banking and make money. We could go out and start selling carpet and make money. I mean, where along the line do we draw the line?
And I, and I completely hear what you're saying. And I guess, I don't know, I guess this is one of the few issues for me personally that I can speak about is a young person in the community rarely hearing a lot of feedback from young people in the community. This is one of the few things that I've heard from the younger generation, speaking of the twenties and thirties, that would utilize this, that are incredibly excited about this. And so that's kind of where my driving force behind being open and optimistic about it lies and that's just the truth in regards to my comments and my thoughts.
Sure, I understand.
But I do respect where you talk about drawing the line with what kind of, you know, how far do we go in getting into certain things and, you know, to me, this wasn't a wind turbine or a stadium or some huge, you know, this was 72,000, I mean, I, I mean, it wasn't, it was a reasonable thought for what I saw, not only the opportunity, but just the quality of life. You know, it's, it's one of those quality of life features that I think people would be excited to utilize. You know, kind of like the pool, we never make any money on the pool, we lose money on the pool every year, but that is a quality of life feature in our community.
All those kids say it.
That absolutely, that would be, you know, we have to have and this might be one of those things that, I mean, now I'm not in favor of losing any money on it, but I think it could potentially be a wonderful quality of life addition, especially with the given location on that end of Main Street. Anyways, those are just kind of to valid, you know, tell you where I'm coming from and my thoughts.
I'd like to, I'd like to have you go over these impact numbers that you gave us.
Okay, which, do you want to talk property tax or the other section?
Both.
Okay. The first table shows property stormwater, which would be the city's income off of the building in 2013. That totaled about $782.14. The prediction with the new market, obviously there wouldn't be property tax or stormwater paid, there'd be displaced sales tax, new sales tax vendor fees, and special event reservations. I was conservative on special events and only did four for the whole year. That was about 4,000, approximately $5,000 in income. The second table shows the property tax detail for the state of Kansas, USD 490, Butler County, the City of El Dorado, and Butler Community College. The state of Kansas in 2013 on property tax made $16.53. With the projected sales tax, income would be around $11,000. USD 490 made about $688 in property tax in 2013. They wouldn't have a direct monetary impact, but it is in an area that has a school that has about 56% of its students on free and reduced lunch and actually that number's closer to the seventies now. Butler County in general, about $400 of property tax and they would see about $500 in new sales tax. City of El Dorado, $500 in property tax and then that about $5,000 in projected income. The community college saw about $200 in property tax in 2013. They wouldn't see any monetary results except for potential partnerships with their ag and culinary programs.
So based on, based on the table that was compiled with data from Wichita State's Masters Program, which we had them do that, what's been, how long ago did they?
2010.
2010, I'd say four, five years ago. Based on, based on those, those projections, then we go from eight, 700, $1,800, I guess, total property tax detail to the potential of $16,000 a year.
Of which the City of El Dorado gets 4900.
Right.
Correct. We go from about $700, about $800 in income to the potential for $5,000 and potential for more than that.
And that's based on a quarter of a million dollars in sales.
I'm happy, I will give you that, those numbers in greater detail if you would like. I'll show you exactly how the model was run.
I'm just taking your numbers and going backwards here.
Okay. We, we used predictions from Newmana based on pounds of produce.
Yeah. I was reading, I was Googling around and said, Kansas grown farmer's market is open from 7 to 12 Saturdays at Sedgwick County Extension Building, 21st and Ridge Road. So, and there are like about 27, 29 farmer's markets in Kansas?
That number is in the business plan, registered farmer's markets.
I read that somewhere.
29 registered farmer's markets in the state.
So it'd be, do you know how many of those are actual cities?
I, I can't answer that. Several of them are.
Yeah.
But most of them operate under the same kind of principles that we put in the business plan as far as having bylaws that operate the market and the city doesn't actually have a hand in the operations of the market.
What, what if we took, and I'm just kicking your ideas here, what if we would have took and just leased the building and tried it? Did we have to become an owner?
The building is currently leased.
Okay. Now, could we have went down and have we ever tried to do the farmer's market down at the depot?
I can't answer that question for you.
Well, you got a parking lot.
Well, I think part of the, what they're looking at, and when we're looking at the basically open-sided barn concept, where we're looking at estimates of upwards of $100,000 is to build something like that on a parking lot with lighting and, and I lost where I was even going there.
And the, the other great part about the location is the neighborhood that it is in and no major roads have to be crossed in order to access the space by the majority of that area.
And we, and we have adequate, or pretty good parking for on the side and then the county supports us using.
The courthouse parking, public parking on the weekends.
They support it.
It's adjacent to a park?
Correct. And the park would be additional space if the market ever grew to be larger than the indoor area or there was a special event that desired to use both areas.
What about the Humana Building out west?
That's not, we're not, I mean, that's a private deal. I mean, we, that's only utilized for packaging facilities related to.
They couldn't get into farmer's market stuff? I mean, it kind of.
No, that's not our business, I mean, no.
Okay.
We feed hungry people and that's about it.
Mr. Mayor.
I mean, I'm not trying to shoot that down, but that's just not even, we're not like a facility that's created with that intention.
I'm going to, I'm going to sit down, but I'm happy to continue to answer questions if that's okay with all of you.
Mr. Mayor, the depot's rented the majority of weekends for the foreseeable future, I'd say into next year, so that wouldn't be a possibility. And I mean, it's also rented next year most weekends. It's, it's a very popular facility for small events, so we wouldn't hold anything there at this time.
As we discussed this project over the last few years and, and we talked about kind of what we were looking at in a farmer's market, which, which brought us to the discussion of building an enclosure, building a pole barn, for lack of better terms, that vehicles could back into. I mean, that was the desire from the, kind of from that community that we got was the ability to be able to just pull your truck in with your, with your produce on it, park, drop the tailgate and start selling. So that, in addition to the lack of adequate parking at the, at the train depot, the ability to treat it like a farmer's market is, it's also hampered there as well.
And also the idea of a lot of other things other than just produce being utilized. I mean, someone could take a projector into the facility and do dollar movie nights and play classic movies or do, I mean, there's so many opportunities that other flourishing communities utilize with these kind of facilities that are really popular.
Well, I would think.
Government subsidized business. I like it. Government subsidized business, what America was built on. Man, that's a good idea. Let's put the hard-working private and corporations out of business and go for government subsidized. Exactly the road you're going down.
No, it's not.
I don't agree, but.
We're giving them a space to do their business.
Talk to Walmart, talk to, talk to Dillons. Those guys pay taxes, those guys have produce, they got trucks coming in. I, I understand it's a great, good feel situation. It makes me feel good, but you know what? We're opening another one of those Legion contracts up right now. Five years from now, four other, five other guys are going to be up here discussing why we're in it, what are we doing, what went wrong? You know, the meat was contaminated, we got Ebola, whatever. I mean, there's all kinds of things that we get into. All those regulations by the state, grocery stores got to follow that. Everyone in the farmer's market's got to follow that, correct?
I'd be correct.
Now, you tell me how many guys out here growing tomatoes are going to go out and get them tested and everything else so they can go down and sell them for 25 cents and then get a sales tax certificate, buy insurance, and do that. They're going to go, give me my pickup, let me go out on West Central, pay my 50 bucks and do it.
There's no.
So that's, that's my argument against it.
There's no insurance requirement for them to sell tomatoes.
Now, now the other thing, I'm just making my argument.
Well, I'm just saying there's no.
And I'm going to make my argument again, Bill. I'm going to finish my argument because it's a 3-2 deal, so I'm done.
Well, the only thing, this is the last thing I'm going to say in regards to it, is I would encourage people, our city manager, to my understanding, we, the contract is, as you said, I, I don't think it was completely finished because I think he got the feeling that all of a sudden there were other feelings. Because we all originally, I believe, passed the sales tax.
It felt good.
And, and, you know, and we did and we all.
It felt good. I was feeling good about it.
And I think, and I think, let me finish. The city manager, I believe, felt that there was changes in that confidence and so I think that's why this hasn't been completed. But I, I would, again, majority of the feedback I have gotten has all been positive. I am reflecting that right now, but I would encourage people to get on, to look at it, to call, to email, to let us know and that if we're going to change our vote and how we want to direct our city manager in pursuing this, we need to decide the next meeting and go from there, is my opinion.
And Dave, you, you were the, the driving force behind the business plan, so I would, I'd be.
I wanted you, everybody to see the numbers, even though we're, we're going to only collect 600 this year from taxes, to say it's justifiable to collect the 4,900 means, whoa, that's a good deal for the city to say. How much time and money are employees going to spend down there? Employees come to the work for the city, they get paid regardless whether they're here or patching a pothole that needed to be fixed six months ago, right?
Correct.
Doesn't, doesn't matter. We're going to have the same expenditures, okay? Now, if they're spending lots of times doing the feel-good project, something's not getting done.
Would you classify the spray park as a feel-good project?
The what now?
The spray park?
Oh, the spray parks are utilized for free with no, other than taking money away from our pool, okay? And possibly pool sales, which most of the people that go to them probably couldn't buy the $10,000, $15,000 pool. It's a great thing.
Would you say that that project was something that you had a concern about for the future?
I, I would put another spray park in tomorrow.
Knowing what you know now.
But I am not competing against any business other than going to Kansas City, to the Great Wolf or going, well, it used to be a side store somewhere else. So what I'm not competing against, my biggest thing of it is, is once we got done with our fruits and vegetables, well, next thing we're looking into home decor, car sales, whatever, crafts. Well, there's people that sell craft stuff that have retail outlets here, I'm sure. And the next thing we know, the city's got this big craft fair going on. Well, their doors are empty, but the city's doing a great job with theirs, so.
But we allow.
It's government subsidized business.
We allow those things now.
And I'm not going to argue about it. I'm giving you my opinion. There's not going to change my mind. I'm in business, I understand what it is, I understand how hard it is for businesses to survive today. And I'm telling you what, it's an argument, whether you like it or not.
Well, hearing this from you for the first time, I think that we.
You heard it from me last time.
Not to that depth, but we heard.
Well, I definitely have gotten my earful from a lot of other old retired businessmen that say we have no business subsidizing stuff.
And I totally respect that.
And that's, that's my opinion. Now, it's a 3-2 vote right now, I think we all know who's voting no and who's voting yeah. And if you guys want to. And if you guys wanna go with it, it's over.
Hey, but what I'm, all I'm saying is, is now that I know what you're, I mean, now that you've expressed it this way, I think we have an opportunity to go ahead and really stress to the community to look at this and give us all the proper feedback. Because I, I honestly have not heard, and so if you don't support it and you have concerns, please call me. So, because I will represent you just as much as I represent the other half. And then maybe we can have a productive conversation next meeting and make a decision on if we're gonna proceed or if we're gonna go ahead and say this isn't right for us. And it might not be three to two, you don't know that next meeting. So I think, give it a fair chance and let's have a, an honest, productive conversation about it and give the community one more shot to give us their feedback now that they have this information.
And, and I would like to know from a staff perspective if there's any additional information you need from us or any changes we could make that would make the plan more appealing as opposed to being one way or the other. Can we take back and do something on our end to help make it more plausible for everybody involved?
Because you guys have just done what you were instructed.
What staff has done has been fine. The, the idea of it is fine, it's a feel-good project, it's one of those things that, like I said, it's another Legion deal, it's another stadium deal, there's plenty of people that don't like the stadium just because, okay? The thing about it is, is that we are going into subsidized business, we are putting a path for, for people to sell. We are also putting a path, if, if, if we gotta follow all those regulations that was stipulated with, with having it all certified, you're, you're not gonna buy cheaper, cheaper food in small quantity certified. That's just all there is to it. I understand business just a little bit, not very much, just a little bit.
I don't think anyone's saying you don't.
Right, but I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that, 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 I, I just hate getting more and more and more into this subsidizing business, subsidizing something because it can grow into other things. Because government does not have to make a profit. It can exist without profit.
And I totally, 100% respect where we're coming from.
Farmer's markets, they're either is there, they're, they're either there because there, there's a lot of people that wanna do it or it's gonna get subsidized.
I agree, I mean, I agree, I respect your thoughts.
And I don't know who grows tomatoes in the winter around here.
But I, again, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage that we really put this on the agenda again and give the community another shot to get back to us and then maybe, I mean, I, I just don't think it's fair to say right now it could be three to two when I really do think there, again, in regards to the dogs and other issues, some people feel hesitant calling. But I just feel better saying, you can call me about anything and I, I promise I'll always share both ends of the feedback I get. And so maybe if that changes in the next two weeks in what I hear, I might be on the other end and I might learn more after digging through things with staff. So I would really encourage people who have a strong interest in this to do their homework, ask their questions and call personally. And that's all I've got on the market.
I agree with that completely.
Okay. Judy Campore. Yes, it's your time.
I'm Judy Sturans, 105 Race Street, I'm president of Kids Need to Eat and we sponsor the El Dorado Lunchbox program. I am speaking from the older generation viewpoint. And my husband and I travel a lot, I'm not familiar with the business plan, I'm looking forward to reading that, I didn't know it was available. It sounds great, you've put a lot of work into it. We travel a lot and we love going to community markets. And we have found community markets in many of the cities that we go to, Santa Fe, DC, a lot of different places. We always gravitate to the community markets. And our experience has been, and my husband has been a little bit involved in a community market in another city because of a house we own there. Our experience has been, it's been good for the economy and that the grocery stores and other businesses actually support it because they benefit. Now, I'm thinking community market, I'm not thinking just produce and farmers. I'm thinking people who make homemade soap and people who make candles and beeswax and, and candy and condiments and arts crafts. They can be very exciting and vibrant places and often they sell things you're never gonna find in our local stores. But what happens is, they bring people into our community and while they're here, they're gonna go to the grocery store and the pharmacy or whatever. And so it's been a, a really, a great economic boom to a lot of communities to have a community market that allows these little niche things to, to come together and have a mass number of people who are browsing and looking and buying and I think it just really will help our community in many different ways. I totally understand your concern about adding another building that the city owns. But I think we gotta have a little bit of perspective here. This is not the golf course, this is not the Legion contract. This is a tiny, modern, modest investment by the city. And if I understand the business plan, is that eventually it's something that could be spin off and take on a life of its own. It's, the city here has an opportunity to exercise leadership. There's an interest in here, but the interest, but when I started El Dorado Lunchbox, everybody was telling me, oh, we've known this need for years and years and years and years and years. Well, why didn't anybody do anything about it? You're gonna wait for the person to come along that has whatever the skills, the time, the energy to make it happen? Sometimes it's gotta be our, our city to do that, our city has to be the, the galvanizing force that brings all these interests together. And I just really think, I have so many ideas as how a community market could benefit our community in all of its levels. I've, and I've written about that, you may have seen Suzie at the El Dorado chamber was collecting comments about it and I shared my comments with her, I assume you have received those and seen those. Let's not think of this narrow farmer's market tomatoes, this is a broad thing, it's an exciting thing and it can really jumpstart that end of our community and I just really appreciate your open-mindedness and thinking about it. And I do not think of it as government subsidizing businesses. I see it as giving an opportunity for entrepreneurs. There's a lot of entrepreneurial spirit in our community and, and, but it's hard to do it on your own. It's, I can see how, I think you had used the phrase that people can take their trades up to the next level. I really think our entrepreneurial spirit in this, it would make a great incubator for people who are entrepreneurs on a very small level in our community to come together and have that mass of enough vendors there that people come, build it and they will come and it will be profitable and our city will flourish and grow. Thank you for your time.
Judy, quick, quick question. As far as the 4H building goes, you know, it, no matter who does it, whether it's the city, the county, some individual, wouldn't the, the 4H building work for something like that, the doors open up, you got a place in there to eat? There's a lot of times that's sitting empty down there.
I have a response to that. I think, I'm glad that you're making the effort to think of alternatives, we need to think of them. Sounds like you've been doing this, talking about this for about three years, but here's my opinion. I love our 4H building, it is used for so many things. Churches use it for events, the Lord's Acre's gonna be there in October. It's not available on a, on a consistent basis. For a community market to succeed, it needs consistency, uniformity and identity as to where it is. It needs a centralized identity, it can't be commuting. And you know the way that Butler County runs that building is you cannot reserve it more than 365 days in advance. So you can't say, we're always gonna be there on the third Saturday of the month or whatever because it's a first come, first served basis and you cannot rent that building, I have personal experience with that, more than 365 days in advance. So you have to wait to January 1st for the event that you had last year on January 1st, you have to wait in order to be able to, to reserve it again, there's, there's no guarantee you're gonna get it. And that building gets a lot of great use, but I think it's, it's an example of how a building does bring a lot of people in our community. The community market needs to have its own identity, its own fixed site there where there's uniformity and consistency and people can say that's where it is. And I just love its location. It's, it, um, there's a lot of high density poverty in that, not far from there, so I can see us. I, I personally will go out and get grant money to have a voucher program so that we can get senior citizens and other people, and other people living in, in economic hardship will say, you go spend $10 on fresh, organic vegetables or whatever and here's a voucher that will give you another $10 slap. I'm willing to do the grant to do that kind of a thing, so it just has so much potential to do so much for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Ma'am, the Lord's Acre will not be down at 4H Road in October, we would like to move it to the college for the Lord's Acre.
Okay, we're, we're ready to go to the next agenda item, you think? Does anybody else wanna say anything?
What do you can do with restroom facilities?
Mike Glenn Danning, 4509 Northwest Highway 196. I don't live in the city limits, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Did I understand that sales tax money was spent to buy this building or did I misunderstand?
Excess sales tax money.
Okay, and I, and I don't really have a take on one side or the other as far as, do we have a farmer's market or do we not? But what, what brings my attention is all this sales tax money, I don't know what you call this, a capital improvement or, or whatever you call it. And we, you know, whether it be a, a stadium, a country club, a farmer's market, whatever, I'd like to see sometime along the line, my property taxes reduced as promised. And, and I've, I've never, I mean, they call it reduction, you can call it whatever you want, but I've never really seen a reduction in my property taxes. So I guess that's a consideration I guess I would have as far as, I guess it doesn't matter, we've already spent sales tax money on it. But as far as remodeling, is that center section come out or does it stay in there?
We have to ask Scott. We, we've talked about utilizing as it sets now. Commissioner Chapin did ask about the restrooms, those would have to be upgraded to meet ADA requirements prior to opening. And as far as sales tax and property tax reduction, that is one of the first things that the excess sales tax does go to is property tax reduction.
Well, I understand that, but, but I've never seen my property tax go down yet.
And the valuations keep going up.
Well, yeah, like I say, you can call it anything you want, but you know, 72,000.
Though, the property taxes would go up without the, the portion of the sales tax.
Yeah, I know the propaganda there, but.
It's not, it's not propaganda.
Yeah, either vote for the sales tax or we're gonna raise your taxes. I mean, but we don't ever cut anything, we just keep growing and, you know, if either, which that's, that's not my issue here. But, you know, $72,000, in next words, that'd be a steal for that building, that's what you told me on the country club, that was a steal, whatever we bought it for. And, and, and I'm saying it is, but I, but, boy, to fix it the way you wanna utilize it, I, I, I think that'd be astronomical to, to meet just the local codes. Anyway, I was just wanting to, I'd like to see my property tax reduction before all this other stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wouldn't argue with you on that.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, we are ready for agenda item number six.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, this is what we discussed a little bit at the last commission meeting, the El Dorado sewer improvements, the CDBG grant, the city commission, or we're asking the city commission to hold a public hearing tonight and considering authorizing resolutions for submission of the grant. This grant will improve a portion in the southwest portion of El Dorado by removing a lot of aged six-inch clay sewer lines that are, that are clogging constantly and require lots of maintenance and to burst those pipes and install new eight-inch sewer lines. In that process as well, we will make upgrades to residents' sewer services if we do find issues with them along the way. And if, if so awarded this grant, the city of El Dorado would be awarded $500,000 from the state of Kansas for the improvements. The remaining cost of approximately $600,000 would be paid by the city of El Dorado. This is a project that's been in the CIP for a number of years. The city did apply two years ago to try to receive the grant. We did not receive it at that time, so we're reapplying.
$600,000, we're gonna borrow the money, Scott?
The direction we're wishing to go would be state revolving loan fund and amend, amending our state revolving loan that the sewer treatment facility is currently, currently under to add that amount to it.
Does the rate change on the old one? Because the rate was pretty good at the time.
I think it's, you're just amending and adding, adding the $600,000 to that amount.
This, this is just to, to go forward with the grants, correct?
This is, we're asking you to basically say that the city itself is a, a government, assign a resolution to that fact. And then another resolution that says the city wishes to apply for the grant. And then we're asking the mayor, the commission, give the mayor, mayor of the authority to sign the documents relating to the grant moving forward.
I move that resolution number.
2743.
27.
We have to hold a public hearing?
Oh, we gotta hold a public hearing? Well, let's get that done.
Okay, we're ready to open the public hearing up, does anybody have any comments on this particular improvement? That grant money, we don't have anything else that's pressing in town that that could be used for, do we?
We do not, we, we've identified this is the time, this is the location where your, the maintenance staff spends a majority of their time.
Okay.
We have sewage issues going into houses and something needs to be done.
Okay. Any comments?
Is the public hearing closed?
We'll close the public hearing and Dave, you're on.
Okay. 23 what?
2743.
2743, correct? I move that the resolution number 2743, a resolution determining the, let's make sure I'm on the right one here. Sorry, I was on the wrong one. Now, I got it right here now.
Okay.
It just, I have, I touched the screen and it rolled to the next one.
Technology's a great thing.
Well, it is, I was already reading the other one, I'm way ahead of myself. Okay, I move the resolution number 2743. A resolution certifying the legal authority to apply for the 2015 Kansas Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program from the Kansas Department of Commerce and authorize the mayor to sign and submit such an application. Second.
Got a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
2744, Tammy. I move that resolution number 2744, a resolution assuring the Kansas Department of Commerce that funds will be continually provided for the operation and maintenance of improvements to the sanitary sewer system to be financed with community development, development block grant funds.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the mayor have the authority to sign all other supporting documents related to the community development block grant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number seven, project 354.
Yes, tonight we're asking you to hold the public hearing for the improvements on repaving of Atchison Street locusts to Cave Springs and Cave Springs from Atchison to Denver. Current streets are a concrete street that are in need, need of removal or replacement. The public hearing is, is to be held tonight to consider a resolution to order the improvements. There is an improvement district associated with this project. The improvement district will be responsible for paying half of the cost of removal and replacement of curb and the driveways, the new driveways that will serve their property. The remaining cost of the project would be sales tax monies.
So that's kind of the standard thing we do?
It is, it's been a while since we've had a project with an improvement district with sales tax, because the majority of the streets we've been doing here for the last number of years of curb and gutter is still in good shape. So this is going back to the policy that was set on how to assess these streets. I will mention, it is the plan that the Public Works Department will build these roads. The costs that have been sent to these property owners, the proposed assessments, are utilizing a contractor for the entire work. So we anticipate if we're able to follow with the plan and have the Public Works Department rebuild these roads in concrete, that their assessments will go down significantly.
So you're saying we're gonna replace the concrete with concrete?
Yes.
Why aren't we going to asphalt like everything else?
Really, if you look at the material cost of concrete, building a concrete street, the most expensive part you're gonna have in it is the labor and the setup. And if the city crews are able to do that and not assess these property owners' labor, we get a road that'll last longer, less maintenance. Concrete street's gonna hold up longer than an asphalt.
That's the first time I've heard that one, how come we didn't go all concrete in town then?
Because we don't have the manpower to do it?
Yeah, we don't have the funds or the manpower. These being two little one-block sections, it kind of fits within their scope of what they're able to do.
So you're saying it's gonna be cheaper to do concrete than it is to do asphalt?
Well, yeah, I mean, with us just buying the concrete material, not having to pay for any labor or equipment or anything, and utilize our own forces, it's gonna be less expensive. Now, if we bid this out as a contractor, and we're looking at a contractor building us a concrete street versus building us an asphalt street, asphalt's gonna be less expensive.
Twenty-seven, oh, we got a public hearing, no?
Hold the hearing, yeah.
Is there anybody that lives in that area that's got a comment?
That's me, through the way the car's over here.
Thank you.
Teresa Fiorato, five twenty-one South Denver. I'm probably one of the biggest frontage owners on Cave Springs between Denver and Atchison. And this is a lot of money for me. I'm a single person, and I already pay $2,000 in property taxes. And I'm looking at another $6,400. And I'm not sure how many years that can be spread over.
Ten years is what we typically do. It would be at the commission's discretion if, obviously, they could go up to 20 years if they so felt fit.
Guys, I'm in favor of 20 years and always have been, so...
I'm not opposed to that at all.
Okay. I, I will probably have to sell my house if I have to pay this extra tax. And that will reduce the value of my home if they know they have special taxes to pay with it, because most people don't want to buy an older home with special taxes. So I'm opposed to it. I know the street really needs to be repaired, it's in really bad shape. But I don't want to take on these extra taxes, so that's just my opinion. I really feel like my property taxes are just ungodly high already. So it's, if everybody else, I don't know if there's anybody else here for this purpose tonight or not. I didn't have a chance, I have a post office box and I don't go that often, so I didn't get it until last Friday out of my post office box. I haven't had a chance to talk to any of my neighbors to see if anybody else. I know that there's another lady that lives on her social security. The person on the corner of Atchison and Cave Springs is really probably gonna get hit, because they'll have two streets assessed. So I don't know.
And the way we figure those assessments is we take the actual linear footage of curb.
That's why I say I'm probably one of the biggest ones on Atchison, because I have a very deep lot, and I have two, a double driveway access.
And if we go, and if we do go over 20 years, sixty-five hundred is what we're saying the highest. And with Public Works doing this work, it'll significantly reduce that cost. But at sixty-five hundred over 20 years...
Yeah, I thought it was ten.
Yeah, $325 a year.
Yeah, oh, 20 years wouldn't be so bad, no, that's true. I thought it was 10, that's what I've always heard before. So 20 years would help, that's true. And you're saying, and I did hear you say that before I came up, it could be less.
If we stick with the plan, Public Works is able to complete the work, it'll be significantly less.
Okay, do you have any idea when it's scheduled?
They are hopeful to get on it this fall, as soon as possible.
So it's gonna be torn up in the wintertime?
Well...
Because they came through, they came through and trimmed the trees to do this in May.
I didn't know that's what they're trimming them.
And actually, yeah, they came through and trimmed the trees clear up on the street side so that they could get the equipment in there to do it in May, and we thought it was gonna be this summer. And then we get the letter, you know, now, so, but that's, you know, that's, it's never gonna be a good time to have your street torn up, so...
And we're able to, with the concrete being removed, the way the project would proceed is remove all of the concrete in portions at a time that we're not tearing up a whole block would be the preference. And we go back with a crushed aggregate base, get you access in and out during the construction progress. And really what's nice about doing the crushed aggregate base is it's drivable in multiple different type of weather scenarios. And doing a concrete pavement, it's a lot more flexible with temperatures. Now, if we were doing asphalt, it gets below 50 degrees, we can't lay asphalt. But with concrete, there's a little broader range that we're able to do work in different weather.
Of course, there's no way of knowing how long it takes or anything.
I think they'll move as quick as possible, and preference would be to tear out as much as they can do at a time, fix it, and then just keep progressing.
Okay, you don't do it all at once.
If a contractor would do it, we'd tear it all at once. But with Public Works and trying to reduce what some of those specials, those assessments may be, there may be a time when they're tearing it out and then get called off and have to go work on another project. But at least it will be accessible for those property owners.
Okay.
And I think the, I guess, and the mayor mentioned, I'm in favor of spreading these over 20 years. I think it makes it more manageable.
That helps.
And then you'll end up with a good street in front of your house as well, hopefully at a more manageable cost. I mean, that'd be my goal.
And you're making this decision tonight, right? Okay. Okay.
Thank you for waiting.
Thanks for waiting.
Sorry, I had to wait for a long...
That's okay, thank you.
Do we need to do anything formally to change to the 20-year deal, or is that just something?
It's, when the project is complete, they'll be notified by letter of their final actual cost. So like I said, we measure the footage as replaced.
At that point, we can decide.
And at that point, you decide.
Okay.
Twenty years, that makes hers about $30 a month, if I'm not too far off.
Somewhere, yeah. I think I came up with $320 a year.
That's what I come up with.
Yeah.
Not counting the interest.
Yeah.
Okay, is anybody else in the public hearing? If not, we'll close that. Ready for a motion.
Twenty-seven forty-six.
Forty-five.
How'd I miscount that?
Because you don't have a computer in front of you.
Oh, okay, thanks. I move that resolution number two-seven four-five, a resolution determining the advisability of the making of certain internal improvements for the city of El Dorado, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to protest paving improvements, project number three-five four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay, we're ready for agenda item number eight.
Ken Huffman is our IT director, and him and myself have been working on a city website project for a little over a year now. And we are very excited to present our final product to you. Final in quotations, because as I've said earlier, a website is never fully done and it's always developing. If you look on the screen, this is our new homepage. There are different backgrounds. When you refresh, you'll see something different, there's a series of background pictures. The home screen allows you to navigate throughout the site. You can search within the site, or you can click here to search the web. Some of the website features that we wanted to note tonight, down this column, which you'll see on every page regardless of where you are in the site, there's some great features for our community to utilize. This top cell phone with the message is a section called Notify Me. Community members can go into the portal and sign up to be notified through email or text messages on individual items that they would like to see updates on. So if you were to sign in here, you could sign in to receive our emergency alerts, be updated on government or community jobs that are posted on the site, news flashes, calendars. So if anyone wants to sign up to receive community event calendar updates, they can do so, as well as being notified when any agendas are posted to the site. The next one down allows citizens to go on and pay their utility bills online, which is a great new feature that we haven't had in the past. And then we also have news, calendar, and notify me. Up here at the top, these big menu items will stay consistent through all the pages as well, same as this outside bar I already discussed. If you hover over the large menu, it drops down to everything that's housed underneath that portion. So here, if you go to agendas and minutes, any advisory board that has posted agendas or minutes, you can select the date range, and then you have the ability to see that event. So this is tonight's commission meeting. The public has the opportunity to download the PDF version of the packet, or they can do the whole packet, or they can see any previous versions of the agenda. And that would be true for any advisory board that had an upcoming meeting. If you go to the top, Explore El Dorado gives you an opportunity to go outside our site to some of the other sites. So Prairie Trails would take you directly to the golf course website, same with the library. Just some more transparency and ability to see everything the city has to offer in one spot. The last piece that I really want to focus on is this how-do-I section over here. So under this section, community members can go in and maybe get their quickest answer to their questions. So how do I report a concern or complaint? If they click there, they'll have the opportunity to report some of the basic things we hear about. So how can I report a pothole on my street? So I hit it at 3:00 in the morning and I want to do it right when I'm thinking about it. They can access this on their mobile phone or on their computer or tablet and report that pothole right away. And then our Public Works crew gets notified of that, and will have the opportunity to also respond to that person that reported the pothole. So lots of, lots of features and functionality. Like I said, we're still developing some pieces of the site, but we were fully prepared to roll it out with everyone on board as far as our partners in its creation. And I will entertain any questions, or if you want me to show you anything, yes, Mr. Chafin?
I understand that we were able to push this meeting onto the web tonight, correct?
Yes, sir. Well, no, 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 not video.
No video?
No, we don't have that capability yet with our software in the back.
The Channel Seven limitation is what that is, that's a equipment in the back limitation.
Right. But once...
So we will never have live?
Not never, not currently.
Never's a long, long time.
A long time.
The website does have that capability to livestream our commission.
The foreseeable future, let's say, six months?
You know, that's a great question. Because I would love to upgrade Channel Seven to a digital world, to where we can stream that.
Okay, so we're gonna have to redo that?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's the question I needed to answer.
You let me know, and I'll...
Okay. So we got $50,000 we're getting ready to spend on something, and would that do it? That would make... See, Dave's playing on my techie site, so... You're killing me.
We can have you out there and hide that.
Nobody wants to see that again.
The only comment that I want to make in regards to the website is, I know, I know it does look great, but majority, I know, the excitement for a lot of people's coming with, they can pay their bill online, which is something that a lot of people have been waiting for. But I would say, in my personal experience, I can't speak for everyone else, I would guess that 80% of the issues I deal with since I've been on the commission are involved with poor communication. And that's because we have kind of been hard, you know, our website was a little tough to navigate, and Julie does an incredible job at reporting things for the city. But that's a lot of weight to put on, you know, her shoulders and the paper's shoulders. But with the exception of the paper, everything's been kind of hearsay. And we all know that word travels and it changes drastically by the time it gets down the line. And so I would encourage people to use this as a resource, is you have trouble or things maybe aren't working, you know, give that feedback to the city, because I know, like Susie said, it's gonna be a work in progress. But this should be something that you should be able to type in that box and get somewhere to start getting some answers, or at least find a direct contact information to find specific staff members or all of us, where you can get in touch with us directly, and we can go from there. And so I think this opens a constant dialogue, too, that for some people who are gonna be into that, who create that account, are gonna be able to ask their questions, get answers. And so anyways, I'm very excited about that, because I hope people take more of a, put more effort into really going in and trying to find maybe some of the answers themselves, other than always relying on hearsay. Because hearsay, I mean, it's like that exercise you did in school, where you draw the shape on their back, and you do it again, it gets to the end of the line, and it's not the same shape. And that's, I think, an issue that we deal with constantly.
Or G-dos.
In our community.
I don't know when it's time to...
Hey, we should do it right now, I could do it better.
I wanna, I wanna address three things that Chase said while we have it pulled up, and people at home can see those that are still with us this evening. Up here at this top bar, this purple bar, you can sign in and create an account like Commissioner Locke said, and you're able to sign up for those alerts. You're also able to utilize this community voice piece over here, which is an open forum. We can post some initiatives that we have, and you can vote it up and down and comment on those. So we would recommend people utilizing those tools. You have to be signed in and create an account to do that. And the last thing is what you said about...
Before we go any further, can we put, under that community voice, to be able to have that open discussion, can we include things out there, like the dog ordinance we talked about tonight, or the community market, or some of those issues that we discussed tonight?
We can, yes.
And part of the reason of having an account, just to be honest, it may be, I'm speaking out of turn in this, but so people, we can have a dialogue as honest as possible, where people can't just create accounts and hide behind keyboards and write negative, profane things.
Correct, and it will kick out profanity, so anything that has profane language, it'll boot.
Did you hear that, Nick?
The site search is a great tool, too, if you're getting on the site and you aren't sure exactly how it's worded, whatever you're looking for. So if I'm new to the community and I'm looking for the school system, and I just go to the site search and type in schools, it's gonna pull up all the search results. And we hope that people will be able to utilize that feature. And we hope that people will be able to utilize that feature. So it even pulled facilities that we have listed in the site that are within the school Any questions, the other things you, you guys would like to see before you just get to poke around?
I like what I'm seeing, but what's the cost?
The cost over three years is $13,000, a little bit more than that, 13,482, 34. And then after that, our yearly maintenance will be about 4,500 a year. Now, the great thing about Civic Plus is they're constantly, they only do municipal websites, that, well, government websites, not municipal, and they specialize in government websites. They come out with new features and new additions to the site, and we are able to access and utilize those for free for the future of our contract. So anything they roll out, we can attach to our site without additional cost.
I will say, Mike, I've asked them when they started working on this to kind of sit in on a meeting or two, just out of curiosity, the look of the site and functionality. And as someone who hires out a lot of web work, that's a pretty good, I mean, that's, especially for a municipality and the complexity of it.
The cost?
Yeah, the cost, I think, is pretty fair.
No, I-
Just to throw that in, not saying you're questioning that, but I just thought.
No, that's, that's fair. Do they, you have a lot of man-hours keeping this updated?
No, the, all of that has been spread across the department, so the department heads are in charge of upkeeping their own pages. And they're really, we designed it to be a lot of static content with the interactive pieces coming in, the news and the alerts. So if there is a tornado warning and people need to go to the shelters, that will come up across the top. So anytime someone comes to the site, if there's a news alert, they'll be able to see that right away on the website. And then we also have maps that show things that, so if we have, if we're plowing snow or there's a different trash pickup, things like that, people will be able to see that immediately and make it much more functional and usable.
How, how does 360 fit in this? Are we just, or do we have any costs of 360 now?
We don't have, the city doesn't have any costs in 360 after the 2014 budget. That was the last step down of our tiered, I guess, contract that we had with Eldorado Inc. as far as 360 goes. And we will pull our, we already pulled our content off of the site to help build this site. It still lives on 360 as well, but they'll slowly start to tier that down and push people that are searching for the government side onto our site. 360 will continue to exist until Inc. chooses to go in a different road if they choose to. Everything involving economic development as far as their partnership with the city is housed on our site in conjunction with Scott's crew over in engineering.
And if I, and you can maybe clarify this, and maybe we have this as part of our, the city site, but 360 currently still offers opportunities for small business to purchase pages and advertisement, I mean, kind of have their own little piece of website. So that's kind of still the purpose for 360, small businesses utilize it.
I would like to say that the Chamber of Commerce is also building a Civic Plus site. Though, I'm not sure what their go-live date is, but it'll look very similar to our site. So you'll start to see those similarities transition throughout the entire community, in the business world and in the government world. Sector maybe is better than world, but.
I would encourage people to sign up and give their feedback.
Yes. Any other questions about the site? We're really excited about it. We hope people will start getting on and poking around and, like everyone has said, we're open to suggestions and feedback. We think it looks good so far.
Good job.
Thanks.
Looks good. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine, New Business.
Two things, really. You know, the past two weeks have been full of interesting conversations and I, just something that I've, kind of a reoccurring thought of my own that I just wanted to share out loud, and this is just as much for me. You know, I have concerns at times that we have, you know, there's a little bit of community divide with opinions in regards to city issues, issues throughout the community that aren't necessarily pertaining directly to us. And I just think, again, I go back to, a lot of times I represent younger generation a lot of those opinions, because I hear them a lot. I, I want people to feel confident in the city of Eldorado. I want people to be excited about what we offer in Eldorado. And I think every opportunity we have to have the most productive conversations possible, I hope we, we can do that and we can continue going forward in a really positive and productive Because I do, I want, I want, especially, I, I'm somebody, and I hope you all know this, have nothing but the utmost respect, I constantly am learning from folks and leaders in the community and folks that are older than me. I know I'm young, but I especially want to see young people stay in Eldorado and make it their permanent home and feel confident in the community. And so that's just something that I've kind of been more aware of in the past month, and I, I guess I just want to share that thought. And on that, I think a big, a big part of that in promoting that is community pride and doing everything we can to support one another. And it's Homecoming Week for Eldorado High School, so I'd encourage people to go out to the parade on Friday, go to the game, any of the activities they're offering, they're going on, go out and support the Cats. There's a really, really good group of young folks up for prom, kings and queens.
Homecoming.
Prom. I said prom.
Yeah, you did.
Homecoming, king and queen. But anyways, there's a lot of exciting stuff happening this week, so get out if you can and support Eldorado High School and everything else that's going on.
I've got two things that I wanted to discuss. I was contacted, I think Chase maybe and the mayor both were as well, by a small business owner who had some questions about our compost site and the hours and kind of the rules and regulations in dumping at the compost site. Had an opportunity to call him back and have a nice visit. He was asking what went into the decision to disallow commercial dumping at our compost site on, on the south side of town. And as I had an opportunity to go back through some minutes and really understand and then in remembering some of the conversations that we've had as a commission, the decision was made by the commission to disallow commercial dumping as far back as 2006, restricting it away from commercial haulers. And the biggest reason, just to kind of get the information out there, is that, is just the volume that we were receiving at the compost site from those commercial haulers in, in the fact then that we were having to burn more regularly down at the compost site, which as, I don't know if we've had many burns since you've been on the commission and I know Mike previously on the commission, anytime the compost site's on fire, we all get phone calls, so. So that was what went into the decision in 2006, and then as we continue those discussions over the years, you know, in order to, in order to handle that kind of volume, you know, there's a, we would need to buy a big grinder, a hundred, a hundred-plus-thousand-dollar piece of equipment and hire someone to run that equipment. So I had an opportunity to explain all of this to the, to the small business owner that I was talking to, and his biggest concern really wasn't Monday through Friday or even Saturday morning as to where to dump this compost, or to dump the tree limbs that he was working on. It was Saturday afternoon and Sundays. And when we talked about this a few years ago in the commission, we asked the, we asked city staff, you know, about the county landfill in their compost site, and we said, you know, is it, is it open these hours? And they said, yes. And we said, is it free? And they said, yes. And at the time, it was. Those hours have changed at the county. So one thing I, I guess I'd like to ask the rest of you, if, if, if we could, if you would be in agreement to asking staff to kind of revisit maybe an alternative on the weekends when the county's compost site is closed, which wouldn't, I don't think would drastically affect the volume at our compost site, but it would give an opportunity for those people that are trying to get some work done on the weekends or having somebody do work for them on the weekends, have a place to take those limbs. So I don't know what your guys' opinion is, but I had a great conversation with this, with this business owner, and, and he was very agreeable to that, that kind of that solution. I was just kind of giving it to the staff to try and figure out a solution for him. And that's really all he was looking for. He wasn't looking for a place to be able to dump his commercial tree limbs during the week. So I don't know what your guys' opinion is.
I'd be in favor of sending that staff and getting a recommendation.
I agree.
I agree totally. I, one thing that if we allowed on the weekends, I think we need to monitor it, make sure it's coming in from Eldorado if we can, because I don't think if somebody's outside the city limits of Eldorado on Sunday. And, and I think if somebody goes in and monitors that, you know, if you seen a truck down there, I would think you could take a picture of it or something, you know, with all the high-tech stuff. Well, I just don't think that outside the city limits of Eldorado, they ought to be dumping down there. But I agree totally in town.
I don't disagree with that either, but, for example, this business owner works in Eldorado, lives outside of town.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I mean, our trees aren't marked City of Eldorado. I mean, I don't know how we would monitor that. I, I think that the vast majority of our commercial haulers or our commercial workers aren't, aren't doing that work on the weekends anyway. It's those, it's those small business owners that have, you know, maybe a, that are maybe moonlighting doing some of that work, and they're the ones that are going to be using them. And I, I mean, I don't disagree that my preference would be that only trees from Eldorado get taken to Eldorado's compost site, but I don't know how we-
I know how they used to do stuff like that. You brought a copy of your water bill.
Well, but this is a commercial, this isn't-
No, he just gets it from the customer. Just say, give me a copy of your water bill stub. That's how they used to do it.
Well, I think this is a good opportunity to send it staff and kind of get their, get their, their take on it. Again, it was, there was no desire to, to be dumping there during regular business hours during the week. He fully understood that that's, that there's a county facility for that that's built to handle that kind of volume. Because our facility's not, we're, not only do we not have the equipment, we also don't have the land to handle that kind of volume. So, and he understood that. So he was looking for a solution Saturdays after 12:00 PM and, and Sundays. And so I think if you guys, like I said, if you guys are agreeable to sending it staff and just have them come up with some ideas and then bring it back to us, that's what I'd like to do.
Thanks.
And then the other thing was, we had a, Chase and I are the commission representatives on the Eldorado facilities, or Educational Facilities Authority of Butler County, the Stadium Committee. They've been kicking around a better way to, to handle the lease payments. What we've been asking from the, I say the lease payments, the lease agreement and the addendum, what we've been asking as a commission for, I think since the inception, since its inception, was that we not be expected to pay for more than, than what we would actually use the stadium, because we don't have a football team or a track team as a, as a city. So those changes were finally made. Herb sent out in his manager's report a copy of, of kind of those notes that would, that would say, I think it was us paying-
Twenty-six hundred dollars.
Yeah, twenty-six hundred dollars a year as opposed to-
Thirty thousand.
Yeah. Well, it came out to five, I'm sorry, like five percent. Yeah, we, we used that stadium five percent of the time, BCC used it 66% of the time, and 490, 29% of the time. So our payment came out to twenty-six hundred dollars. That money, our money, then the thirty thousand dollars, thirty-four thousand from BCC, the fifteen thousand from the school district, would go into their maintenance fund to pay those bills. And we just needed to kind of ratify it on our end that, that made sense to us for them to be able to draw that up, for us to only pay for what we're using, for the percentage of time that we're actually using it. So I wanted to get your guys' opinion on that.
How long are we committing to that? Is that just like for this year, or is that something, or is that kind of set in scene that once you go forward with that?
I think that's hard to answer. I mean-
I mean, this, this, this one is specific to this year in that, that addendum is renewed regularly. I think, I think the concept, though, of that we would only pay for the percentage that we use, I think should, I mean, that's kind of been our guiding concept since the beginning in trying to renegotiate this, this agreement with EFABC, because there was a point in time when they wanted a third, a third, and a third, and, and we weren't amicable to that because we don't use that place a third of the time.
Yeah, no, I agree.
So this five percent is specific to this previous year, and it'll, it'll be recalculated each year based on the percentage of use. So if we start having more activities there, then obviously we would, our portion of that would go up. But I think kind of the, the intent of this is just so to ratify the concept that we're going to pay for what we use or pay for our percentage of use rather than being stuck with a third across the board.
I'm in favor of that.
I'm okay with twenty-six hundred this year, that's what I'm saying.
Okay. So you guys, is that all you need, Tim?
Can you go ahead and give me a motion and a vote on that?
I move, we do what Bill said.
Do we have a second to add?
All right.
I don't know if I want a second.
Dave?
Which, which time?
Who's that?
Yeah, let's get Dave trapped here. Okay.
Ethan?
Oh, come on. Where's my second?
Rup.
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks. Well, we need to know what he said, so she can type it down.
We're calculating this year's investment in the Long-Term Maintenance Fund based on hourly usage rounded at the nearest percentage as follows. The city of Eldorado, five percent use for $2,625.
For 2014 or something?
For, yeah, 2014.
Okay, you got a motion and a second? We did have a second, wasn't it, Dave?
Yeah.
No, it wasn't Dave.
It wasn't me, huh? I wanted to know what time, which time Bill said.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second?
Mayor, I think it's important that you note that that's calculated July 1 through June 30, not December, or January to December, that usage. It's a school year.
Sorry about that. I should have, it does say that.
It doesn't, okay. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? In that five percent, what did we use in our five percent?
That includes special event uses by the city, so the mayor's dinner, that was up there. It includes men's flag football that we use the stadium for and some other rental space that we used it.
That we sponsored.
Yeah, events that we sponsored. Leadership Butler class met there, some other items. But the majority of it was men's flag football and then also the AAU track meet and then AAU track practice over the summer that we sponsored as rec events.
Anytime we can pass that cost on to whoever's using it would be nice. Now, you know what I'm saying, if you're going to count that one in, there's your cost.
When the facility's rented, we typically pass the cost on, but the larger events like the AAU track meet, the cost that they would have paid was minimal compared to the amount of business that they brought to town.
I agree with that.
Usually, we're weighing that, using that impact model if we're going to give the facility for free or not.
Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, five oh.
That's it.
I had something, but I forgot what it was.
Dave, you got something?
No, I don't have anything today.
Thank you for bringing up that limb deal, because I had that on my list. And I had a couple of other things. The only other thing I want to bring up is that I was at a Holly Frontier Advisory Meeting this afternoon, and they were talking about the turnaround coming up. And if I got my notes right, there was like 1,600 people, employees that's going to be in town for six to eight weeks. So you talk about an economic impact, you bring that one to there, Susie, and look at that one. So that's a big thank you to them. The other thing I wanted to make sure is that if you're going to be using Haverhill Road, like from 6:00 to 7:30 in the morning or like 6:00 to 7:00 in the evening, better to look for another way, because by the time you put the school on that and put these guys coming out of that parking lot, that's going to be a busy street. So just kind of want to let everybody know that that's going on, and I think they're going to spend, what was it, cheap, 46- And I think they're going to spend, what was it, cheap, $46 million? $46 million, that's a big investment in our community. So I want to say thank you to those guys.
I think they've been coming in already, haven't they? Or it seems like the past month, I've seen a lot of tags that are out of state that spending time at the Y and at the restaurants and everything.
The Chamber and the CBB also worked together to put, to put together a welcome packet for all of them and some information at all the hotels as far as our restaurants, laundry, things they can do when they do have some downtime. So you'll start to see that out in some of the local businesses and then it'll be provided to the employees that are coming for the turnaround through Holly Frontier.
They said every motel in town will be full. They'll be in Wichita and even on the west side of Wichita, some of those guys. So that's how many.
Hate to be the guy on the west side of Wichita.
I just thought that was kind of interesting. Okay, we're ready for Agenda Item Number 10. We got an executive session. This item is for the purpose of discussing legal matters.
How much time do we have?
How much time?
About 10 minutes?
10 minutes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to recess. It's an executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters and reconvene a regularly scheduled meeting in the City Commission Room at 10:45 PM.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're back from executive session and we don't have any motions to be made.
We got one.
So we're ready for your motion?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you and good night.